Of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, we'll begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stewarded this land through the generations. We thank them for their strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, we will go ahead and get started with our agenda. So, roll call. Benjamin, please.
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Stanley?
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Here.
Commissioner Werner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
I'm here.
And Mayor Shamro?
Here. And move on to announcements from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. I have three announcements this evening. I just wanted to update the commission that I've been communicating with Garfield Township regarding their request to have an agenda item regarding our bulk water agreements. And they have confirmed that March 17th is a date that works for the township supervisor and manager. So, that was just confirmed shortly ago. I've also been communicating with the Joint Rock Authority regarding the Commons Water Pressure Project, and so I will also have an update forthcoming as we meet and continue to talk. Strategic planning focus groups are underway with two today with a lovely presentation at the Noon Rotary Club. David will also be presenting to Sunrise Rotary Club early tomorrow morning, and then we have more focus groups tomorrow and Thursday. We've had inquiries from the public who cannot attend the daytime meetings, so I just want to remind the public that we have opportunities tomorrow and Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30 for community input, and David will speak to more of that under Old Business. And then, the city's 2024 Annual Report, The Performance, has been published, highlighting the city's accomplishments of the past year. And I just want to thank the city staff that worked really hard to put that together. It's available in your packet, and it's available online.
Thank you. And announcements from the city clerk?
Yes, I've got meetings to announce for this week, the week of February 17th, 2025. The Arts Commission is meeting on Wednesday, February 19th. That'll be at 3:30 PM in the committee room, which is on the second floor of the governmental center. The Planning Commission is meeting on Wednes-- excuse me, their meeting, the Planning Commission's meeting that would have been held Wednesday, February 19th, has been canceled. The Downtown Development Authority Board will meet on Friday, February 21st, and that's at 9:00 AM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the governmental center. We're recruiting for a few different boards and committees, including Board of Tax Review, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Arts Commission, and Traverse City Light and Power Board. Anybody interested in serving, I encourage to contact the city clerk's office for more information, including how to apply. Some community updates, the city's City Academy program applications are open. That academy exists to help showcase for folks and share a lot about what it takes to make city government happen, and it's a way of building a bench of potential ambassadors and volunteers to serve on different boards and committees, maybe even the city commission. It's a five-week program that's free of charge, very interactive, and meals are included, if that's a little bit of enticement. And folks can go to the city's website to learn more about City Academy, and again, those applications are available now through the end of February. Also now, through the end of February, the city commission Brown Bridge Trust Fund ad hoc committee is seeking public input on improvement suggestions, suggestions to use dollars to make public improvements to parks and improvements for accessing city parks, and the survey can be found on the city's website under the news section. And then, just a couple of miscellaneous reminders, that the city is currently recruiting for a number of part-time, full-time, and seasonal positions. Those opportunities are on the city's website. We also want to remind residents and business owners to please keep their sidewalks clear of snow and ice, and also, if you can, shovel around fire hydrants to keep those clear so that when moments are really precious, people aren't wasting valuable time clearing fire hydrants. And then, lastly, the usual reminder for everyone up here to please speak into your microphone so we can all hear you. That's all I've got.
Thank you for that, and I'll have you just keep rolling then with the consent calendar, please.
Yes, the purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public can ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed from it and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests are automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Item one, consideration of approving the minutes of the February 3rd, 2025, and February 10th, 2025, meetings of the city commission. Approval recommended. Item two, consideration of retaining Michael Watzza for professional legal services associated with cell tower negotiations as recommended by the city attorney as required by the city charter, and consideration of authorizing the related professional services agreement. Approval recommended. Item three, consideration of authorizing an amendment to an agreement to provide for term extension and extended services for professional services related to foundational work in connection with strategic planning. Approval recommended. Item four, consideration of authorizing an amendment to the contract to finalize the non-motorized trail facility design and to leverage funding for necessary easements. Approval recommended. Item five, consideration of authorizing a confirming purchase order for diesel fuel for city operational use. Approval recommended. And finally, item six, consideration of authorizing the fireworks display permit for the Maisig Beederman wedding celebration. Approval recommended.
Thank you very much. Would any commissioner like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Tim?
Item four, please.
Item four. Any other items? Seeing none, any, sorry, any member of the public would like to pull out an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, so we'll go to item four. Commissioner Werner, if you want to--
Sure, I'm supportive of moving this forward. Great idea. But I'm not supportive of engaging Progressive to do this work. If you recall, back after Phase One, representatives of TART Trails stood at the podium, and I asked them many technical questions about the final design, which they were not necessarily able to answer because TART wasn't who designed it. It was Progressive, and it was Progressive's oversight or lack of expertise which got us to that point. And I think what we want for this next phase is the best possible design for our community, and Progressive has not shown themselves to be the company for that. So, I would rather see us either identify a different party or put it out to bid to get somebody else in to work on it.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions?
Just to reinforce what Commissioner Werner had to say, I recall not very many months ago that there were a number of concerns about the design on Phase One of the TART Trail along the bay, and I see this phase as being perhaps even more challenging in terms of the limitations and easements and having a lot more issues. And if we were not fully satisfied with the results from Phase One, I would support putting it out for RFP.
Okay. Go ahead, Heather.
I don't think Progressive did a good job the last time around either. An example is the positions of the benches where they were un-ADA accessible, and they all had to be pulled up and moved. However, I talked to Julie Clark today, and she, it was her understanding that Progressive was not actually doing any design on this next phase, that what they were doing was going and looking to see where telephone poles or light poles had moved and just taking basic measurements. No design was involved at all. They were just recalibrating the changes that had been made by MDOT during Phase One.
I believe that's correct, yes. So, do we have other questions, or would somebody like to make a motion?
And Director Sean Winter has nothing to say, maybe, about this?
Have a question, or?
Well, is that correct?
I would say that's partially correct, not totally correct. We do have a design through there. But if you remember, when we were starting this design, MDOT was still working on finishing their design. So, now that they've built their product, we have to field check everything and then possibly make modified designs to what we have to make sure that it all matches up. Because oftentimes, when you have a project like this that MDOT's working on, they have to do in-the-field adjustments in real time during construction, and so we have no record of where that is. So, if a telephone pole had to move eight inches when they were installing it, we don't know that unless we get out there and survey, and then we have to adjust our designs to incorporate that.
Okay, so it is survey and design?
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of the design is already done. It's now modifying the design to get it to fit with, better with what MDOT has finished. Because as I understand it, we've asked, MDOT still doesn't have their complete-as-built yet, so we have to field check everything. And then, as often is the case, modifications, slight adjustments have to be made to the design before anything can go out to bid or constructed.
But you're saying that it would be a modification based on the MDOT design, not we're asking Progressive AE to design the whole thing?
Well, we already have paid them to do that.
Right, well, but what I mean is this contract here--
This is just, and part of that cost is going to have to go through the MDOT review process if this becomes an MDOT easement, which is, you know, it's using federal money. There's more strings attached, more processes, SHIPO reviews, NEPO reviews, things like that. So, that's what that process, that cost helps cover.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
So, what you're saying is pretty much what's done is done. If we go through and we do, if some of the commissioners are displeased with their current work, it's not going to be, nothing's going to change if we put it out for bid and hire somebody else to finish the surveying?
We would probably, honestly, we'd probably pay a little more because, you know, there's institutional knowledge. They have all the files, you know, all the data and stuff that we've been working on. So, if you're asking me, if we went out to bid, I think it would cost you more than $20,000, quite possibly, because again, they're already in contract. There's an economy of scale that comes with that, that they're already working on. So, yeah, they've gone through and designed it. When we went through the public input, we heard pretty loud and clear that the public was more excited about new trail connections and improvements to existing trails. So, that's what we focused on for implementation. When we did our RAP grant, we only got as far as Senior Center for what we applied for, because once you got past Senior Center, between there and Peninsula Drive, it became very constrained, and we needed easements. Easements often cost money. We didn't have the money until MDOT came forward with this money. Now, we have a potential path forward, so that's why we're here to address with the commission.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Could you tell us a little more about the aspect of this proposal where MDOT actually holds the easements rather than the city?
Yeah, so, I'll do my best, because I'm not an MDOT employee, but it would be, they're using their money, so it would be their easement if they purchased it, and then our trail would be permitted through there, just like we can't use our money to buy, or, you know, pay Blair Township for an easement, just like, you know, they have to do it as part of their right-of-way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tim?
Yeah, just like to add some detail to why I'm opposed to Progressive is, this isn't, it's not that it's easy, but it's not as easy as a piece of trail on the waterfront. This has lots of driveway crossings, so very dangerous for the public with all these conflict points, and so it really does take expertise. It's not just, hey, let's just put the concrete down. And while it might not be a complete design from zero, it is the opportunity to have other expertise look at the current design, and they could raise red flags if Progressive hadn't previously raised red flags about areas of serious concern. That's my take.
So, you would want to see this go out to bid and have a much larger budget attached to it to redo it in a totally--
Doesn't necessarily have to be much larger, but yes, it would be larger, but $20,000, you know, MDOT's bringing $300,000 to the table. It's not, it's a fraction. It is. In the long run, it's probably worth it to have a high-quality trail.
That's what MDOT's bringing through them and their design. We're paying for this park to be modified. That doesn't seem to me, that seems like it's MDOT's design, not ours, to go in and add $60,000 to or $100,000 to to make it the way we want, because it's MDOT's right-of-way in design, correct? Am I reading?
No, this is not MDOT's, like, according to the documents--
The right-of-way--
The design was a collaboration between MDOT, Progressive, TART, and some portion of the city.
But I'm talking about the right-of-way portion, is MDOT's--
The right-of-way is MDOT's, yeah.
Yes, yes.
But they're open to a trail. They're not going to be, I think, too, they're not going to stand in the way of, like, a modification to a turning radius or something like that from a trail to an access point or whatever it might be for public safety.
Mitch?
Yes. This isn't, by and large, our project. It's MDOT's project, operating on MDOT's right-of-way. City of Traverse City is not the primary entity responsible for this road, nor is it responsible for this trail. We have, though there's a lot of history, largely outsourced trail design procurement and designation to TART as a nonprofit entity, among other nonprofit entities. They are responsible for writing the grants, determining the best routing for trails. We don't have a trails department, we have a streets department. So, this project is substantially designed already. We're talking about making minor modifications to it with an existing contract. So, with that, I'll move that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute a contract amendment to Progressive Companies, FKA Progressive AE, in an amount not to exceed $20,000 to finalize non-motorized trail facility design, such contract subject as to its substance by the city manager and to its form by the city attorney with funds available in the planning department budget.
Okay. Go second?
Support.
Okay. Second by Stanley? Yes, Commissioner Werner?
Just a slight rebuttal. When TART stood up there answering my questions to the best of their ability, they made it clear that they are not experts at trail design, and to your point, we don't have staff that are experts at trail design. So, the experts at trail design to date has been Progressive AE, and they've shown themselves to be lacking, and so that's why I'm interested in having a second set of eyes on it. That's all.
Commissioner Shaw?
And in fact, this proposal that's come from MDOT is new. This is a whole new idea, that they're providing money for these easements along 31 there. So, that's a whole, this is a whole new deal now, and we are working on a complete streets policy right now that the main thesis is that all modes of transportation are equally valid. And I don't think that Progressive AE, over the, I don't know how many years, six, seven years, that I've watched them work, has done a good job at treating all modes of transportation equally. They definitely favor cars. So, I totally support sending this out for an RFP to another company that has more experience with other modes of transportation besides motorized vehicles.
Is Chris Kuschman here? Chris, I know that we've had some conversations here about TART and the influence on the design. Would you want to come up and?
Yeah. Good evening. Chris Kuschman with TART Trails. I do want to provide a little context about this segment. It's the seven properties from the Senior Center going east up until Peninsula Drive. So, if you can picture that area, it's, I think, about 700 feet. The houses there are really close to the sidewalk, so the, and I understand the interest in getting kind of different engineering perspectives on this, but this is going to be, because of the constraints of the homes, this is really going to be an extension off of the existing sidewalks. There just isn't room for any deviation from that straight line. So, in other words, the existing sidewalk is five feet. This would be an extension off that, and there just isn't room for meandering amenities, you know, kind of a creative design for this. Elsewhere, absolutely, but this, I just don't, personally, and from TART's perspective, don't see the room for creativity in this section.
And so, Progressive was asked in this case, and you all, I should say, worked with Progressive, MDOT, to say, okay, here's this limited space we have to work on a trail only, not looking at trail versus car or other functionality points. That was the purpose of this design, was to put, expand that out and put that trail there?
Exactly, yep. The goal is to get the standard 10-foot wide path with buffer space between it and the curb.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris Williams up? Any other questions at this time?
It's just very confusing. We hear, okay, it's only, we only have these parameters, it's just a survey, you know, it's just, and then we hear, well, actually, there is, there are some design elements. It's, I'm confused.
Well, we have a contract with Progressive, as you know, to design this trail. So, this is a, what we call a bottleneck spot, both in terms of space and funding, which is why we haven't gotten past it. We have this unique opportunity before us. I agree with Chris, it's very restrained. We're going to be working up against the edge of the right-of-way as a way to minimize the amount of impact to the private property owners. We can't put a trail through there without impacting private property, which is why we're here, to talk to you about this and see if you're interested in moving it forward. I don't say this as any kind of threat, so please understand that, though. This project is a contract that the construction work is now done. They're working on finishing up the billing and all that. Once this project closes, that $300,000 isn't available to us anymore. So, just take that into consideration as you're thinking about going out to bid, and if that's the commission's prerogative, definitely, but I just think you should have all the facts as you make these decisions. That is an opportunity.
Tim?
A rebuttal to Mr. Kuschman as far as it's just a straight line. It's not, though. Part of the concern with what Progressive AE did previously is their lack of appreciation for the importance of signage and various details like that because of the conflict points, et cetera. So, I think there are opportunities, yes. It might still just be a 10-foot wide, straight line, seems pretty simple, but in the details, it can make a lot of difference as far as public safety, and I just don't see--
Can you name a specific driveway along this seven properties?
I'm not the designer. If you want to go out and design it, you go ahead.
Hey, let's all ask the, we've got TART here. I have a question about that. We've asked this in the past, like, for the Senior Center, that we said we wanted signage, and they did put in signage without having to redo a whole design and things like that. Is that, is signage still somewhat negotiable or paint or anything like that, or for these concerns about warnings, or is that built into a plan right now? I'm asking you, Chris, I guess, like, it's kind of a, it's a mixed bag, since you guys are all working together.
Yeah, no, that's not a done deal. That can be, the signage can be, again, what this contract with Progressive is for is to provide MDOT Real Estate Division all the things that they need to do their work with the landowners, but also, again, finalize that design. So, the driveway crossings, giving trail users in advance notice that we've got seven driveways or five driveways there, and just, yeah, incorporating that into this final design is part of the scope.
Right, so then, it's not fundamentally large changes, that there are things that can be worked on as move through the process, but can keep going with where we're at right now?
Yeah. The physical constraints are, the trail is going to be essentially where, right parallel to the sidewalk? Yeah, there are opportunities for those remaining details of markings.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other questions at this time? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on this item?
I'll state the rules for public comment this evening. Please indicate your name and address if you're a city resident, non-city resident, or a city business owner. We do have a three-minute time allotment. When your time has elapsed, a timer will beep, and we ask that all language, to be respectful to everyone. Thank you.
Justin Reed, Traverse City resident. I want to say at the TART Trail, the little sliver that got done during this last summer in the, right next to the parkway is awesome. I think it's great. I think it's great that separates a little portion from the pedestrians and cyclists. I think it's a wonderful job. I think the rest of it can be that wonderful going towards the opposite way, past the Senior Center, and like, you know, like TART has said, and your guys' planner has said, that there's constraints going along that way from the Senior Center onto Peninsula Drive. Whoever, if you did RFP for it, I'm pretty much sure any engineer would say the same exact thing. There is not enough right-of-way through there, and they're going to probably have the same design. So, because I think, I think it's wasted tax money to go ahead and to have, you know, go out for an RFP for getting the same results. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back. Mayor, the city manager?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that if we were to put out an RFP, and then the turnaround times, then to review that and bring it back to the board, we're looking at maybe the second meeting in April as the most, probably the most conservative ability to get that back. I'm just, we have one more meeting in March and then spring break, and our meeting's in April. So, I think what Mr. Winter was saying is that I don't know that there's a specific hard deadline, but we're nearing it with MDOT, and so there's, there is a chance that before this board could approve an RFP, that that money might not be available. That's my understanding.
Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I'm a waffler on this one. What Chris from TART said did kind of inspire me to make, maybe move forward with this, that there, that the contract is for Progressive to work with the landowners to get these easements put into place. I mean, I do ride my bicycle on that sidewalk. There's not a lot you can do. It's a short distance. There's really not much you can do. Do I, do I want to work with Progressive anymore? No, I don't. I really, really don't. But I guess I will support this to go through.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw? And any other comments or questions at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on now to old business. We're going to start with a strategic action plan update with Future IQ.
Thank you. I'm happy to introduce David Burrell to the city commission once again, who's in town hosting our focus groups, and he has a presentation and update to give to the city commission. So, thank you, David.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So, just a brief presentation, because we're back here again, as you said, city manager doing the focus groups. I've got a, I want to do a little bit of an update on the community survey. So, when I was last here, we had only just launched that, and we're now sort of well into that process, so I think we've got some really interesting data coming through that I want to share with you. So, just in terms of where we're at, so you've seen this matrix before. I just put this up to kind of refresh our minds that we've been working on this notion of these different possible futures. To recap, this was the data from the think tank and the community visioning sessions, which we ran through October and November, so about 200 people weighed in on this, the red being the least desired future, the green being the expected future, the blue being the preferred future. Obviously, the appetite for the preferred future is in that upper right, so that's a future where we're kind of leaning into the community evolution, you know, thinking about building a complete community, like strong social fabric, you know, good amenities and so on. And the vertical axis, the proactive design, is really, really thinking about the urban landscape and the design principles, and all the things that go with the development and infrastructure. We were a little surprised from our side on Future IQ by this data, right? So, this was really strong appetite for change is what it suggests in terms of that sort of concentration of the preferred in the upper right. I mean, it's excellent data, because it's, you know, people are closely kind of correlated, so it shows sort of some alignment. But we wanted to test this a little further, and so we built that into the community survey. We were due to close the community survey on Friday, just gone, but a few of the staff want us to pass 1,000 survey responses. We're at 995 right now, right? So, we're going to keep the survey open until the end of the month, and that doesn't have any kind of implication to the project timeline. But we actually did have a bit of a surge of people coming to do the survey at the end of last week. So, the data I'm going to show you is as of today, which is 995 people. And I got to say, I mean, the survey, if you've taken it, it's like 25 questions. It takes 10 or 15 minutes to do. It's very high-quality data, because we're able to identify people in terms of their age profile, where they live, their relationship to the city, and so on, and there's a whole range of sort of qualitative and quantitative responses. So, if you like data, it's fantastic, right? One of the things we've been asking in the survey is around those two axes that make up that scenario matrix, so the community evolution and the development trajectory. And this one here, oh, sorry, this one here is just looking at the importance of a shared vision and shared values. I showed you preliminary data on this last time. People are obviously saying they want to be in that sort of 10-10 category, which is that it's important. But I wanted to show you this one as well. So, this is the, this is the one that I think is the cause for a pause or concern as we think about strategic direction. The horizontal axis, the x-axis, is asking, or people's response to-- The horizontal axis, the x-axis, is asking people's response to a question about how do you feel about the current direction of Traverse City. The left-hand side is they're very concerned, and the right-hand side is they're very happy. The vertical axis is how do they feel about the speed of change. And you can see that there's a significant number of responses in that lower-left quadrant, where people are essentially saying they're concerned about both those dimensions, direction and speed of change. And given this is 1,000 survey responses, you can imagine how many sort of people are in each of those bubbles. I think that is something to consider as we go forward, that there is this underlying consideration about the direction and the speed of change. As we look at the open-ended responses on this, people talk a lot about the scale of development and the pace of development. So it's a lot triggered around development and around the sort of tourism impacts into the community. So we're really trying to dig into this set of topics as we go through these focus groups to understand what's driving those two areas of concern. But I wanted to show you this one particularly. So this is back to that scenario matrix. In that survey, we asked two questions about those axes. So we asked the question about the community evolution and the development trajectory. And then with each person's response, we sort of plotted them on an X and Y. And you can see that the data skews very strongly to that upper right. And interestingly, to me at least, even more so than the people from the think tank and the community visioning sessions, right? Now, they didn't have all the context in this survey that the people in that process did, but it does, again, point to this appetite for change. That's what this chart is saying to me, right, is that people are expressing a significant desire to move on these different axes of community evolution and the development trajectory in the way that we've framed it in the scenario at work. If you... And you can see on the right-hand side there, there's those filters, the age group, ethnicity, how long you've lived in Traverse City, and where do you live. If I do some cohort analysis, which we just started to do, this is looking at the 14 or 15 different options people had about where they live. So there was 14 groupings in the city, so we had a map in the survey so people could kind of locate themselves. We have about 14% of the responses are people who live outside the city limits, but obviously have some connection. But again, what's kind of fascinating is that they just plot all over the top of each other. There is really just no difference in the cohorts from the different locations in the city, or even people who live outside the city. I've looked at other different dimensions on that, and age cohort doesn't really change. So I think we've got a very consistent response coming from across the various citizens who participate in the survey. Couple of other data points that are coming forward. We asked people about how important do they see different aspects around the future development of Traverse City. In this one, the top bar is around expanding business diversity and innovation capability for a year-round economy. The middle one is around proactively managing urban design to protect local character and community feel. And then the last one there is about taking a regional collaborative approach to help manage resources. The blue is where people are saying it's important or very important. The gray is neutral, and the red is not important. So that's on a, you know, on a 1 to 10 scale. Again, these sort of phrases and terms we've talked about, but it's interesting in this survey, as we reach further out into the community, we're still getting the same strong support for these topics that we had really from the think tank forward. The other aspect is the one around the community direction. The top bar here is designing, supporting community amenities and programs that build a strong local community. The middle one is the socioeconomic systems to create a balanced and livable community. And then the last one is the regional leadership that helps build the city influence in key decisions. So again, strong support for those. So obviously, we're going to be processing that data, and as the survey closes, we'll post that to the project portal. That'll all be filterable, so people will be able to go in and sort of interrogate the data and look at the different cohorts, get a sort of insight into what their colleagues think. But we're at this stage now, so we're at the point of working on these strategic pillars. We finessed these in a roundtable that we had about a month ago that several of you were at. We narrowed that down. We ended up with these six strategic pillars. This week, we are having focus groups on each one of these. So they're sort of two-hour sessions where we're digging in deeper to understand why each pillar's important and those action ideas under each one. So we're sort of moving into that, how do we make this happen, that preferred future? Today, we held the building socioeconomic systems and amenities and the supporting environmental sustainability, those two, right? Tomorrow, we have the urban design one and the placemaking and neighborhood character, and I think they'll be both fascinating ones, because I think that's a... Obviously, the proactive urban design or managing that is a really powerful topic here, so it'll be interesting to see where we get with that. So through the course of the week, we'll go through these six. And as city manager said, and we added this week too, because we had... We were thinking about this, but we hadn't kind of pulled the trigger on it, but we had a couple of people who said they couldn't come to the sessions during the day. So we added these two evening sessions. So these are open community sessions, an hour and a half, and people are going to be able to weigh in on all six of the pillars. So we'll have posters up, and people will be able to go and add their thoughts. We did this because of the commitment that, you know, is embedded in this project, which is to make it open and available for people and to make it sure it's a really community-driven process. We want to remove all the barriers, and obviously, we're close to 1,000, 1,500 people have had significant input, and we want to obviously keep expanding that. I was surprised today, actually, that at the focus groups, probably only half the people there had taken the survey, right? So we've still got room to run, I think, right? So, and hopefully tomorrow night and the next night, we'll be adding more people to the conversation as well. This is my last slide here, the next steps. We have the focus groups, as I've mentioned, running this week. The community survey, we've now pushed out to February the 28th. Then we'll put those results on the project portal. After we get through these focus groups, we'll be developing the draft actions that come out of the discussions. We'll have a short second surveys that look at prioritization of those actions. We'll be working on the final plan through March and April, and then bringing it back to the community in May as a final plan at the future summit. So that's my update.
Great. Do we have questions right now, or... I'm just trying the... Sorry, I'm stalling a little, because I'm trying the Bitly here that's with the QR code on the flyer in our packet, so I could share the link again later. And it is not... It's coming up as something's wrong. So I don't know if that's just my end or yours, but...
We'll check that.
Yeah. QR codes are always better, but I have glare from above, so I couldn't get to load right away. So, go ahead, Jackie.
I just wanted to say thank you. I think the progress on this has been spectacular. Is there any way that we can get previews of the final plan that might help to inform some of our decision-making on things like capital investments and budgets for '25, '26?
Yeah, so another sort of commitment in this is being very open and transparent. You know, that's obviously why we have the project portal. We are posting the summary slide decks from each session, and as we sort of process the notes. So out of this week, we're really pulling together the focus group actions. I presume you're sort of talking about priority actions that are emerging. The ideas from the focus group, coupling that with what came out of the roundtable session we had a month ago, plus the two community sessions this week, we'll do a first draft of what we think are the high-level actions that are emerging as we pull that data together. And we can make that available, and we can also put that on the project portal as, you know, discussion topic and so on. I mean, I do think, now, by the time we get to the end of this, there should be no surprises. I mean, this is the sort of thing that you really want to have your finger on the pulse all the way through, so that you can see what's coming, see what the community's saying, and be able to contribute through that process as well. So we can let you know via the city manager when that material's going up on the portal.
Thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll just... May I say something?
Yeah, of course.
I was at the socioeconomic focus group today, and there were only nine people there, but it was so interesting, the variety of people. There was somebody from Beta, there was someone from Traverse Connect, there was someone from Aspire North Realty, and there were some surprising insights that came out of the group that, you know, like, we have a monopoly of hospital care here, which is a problem. The Aspire North guys suggested that we needed to help people convert bedrooms in large houses, which is what's kind of interesting, coming from a Realtor. So it was definitely worthwhile. It was very small, but that made it more nimble in a way, and definitely worth going. I hope that more people can attend these focus groups.
Yes, and I'm very glad that you're offering some of the evening for those that might not have been able to make it for work. So it's very nice that they're going to be broad for people to be able to put input on all kinds of ideas, right? So, excellent. Great. Thank you for the report from this morning, too. All right, I think we're all set for today, then. We'll hopefully be seeing you soon, all of us in the community here, and the various opportunities that we have over the next few days to interact more.
All right. Thank you very much. And I would like to just do a call-out to Liz and her staff, and Colleen in particular, who've just been champions at getting the message out to people and sharing the opportunity with people to make sure people know about it. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent. Well, moving on to old business, too, we're going to have a discussion bringing back the pilot for the two-way on State Street. And I'll have you start this, Liz.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yep, so this topic of extending the State Street pilot has been before the DDA, which has made a recommendation to this board, and then we had a study session a few months ago. And so at this point, the city staff are looking for direction this evening on the recommendation to extend the pilot for two years.
And I just wanted to add that I know in the last conversation, we got into creating more permanent bike lanes and things like that. As this is a pilot, you know, that might take some more allocation of funds from us if we wanted to see that, but right now, we're just seeing if we want to explore it. I know different time periods have been mentioned last time. So does anybody want to make a motion or have any other questions right now to help direct us? Commissioner Werner?
Yeah, not a motion, just similar to what I said last time, that it's inconclusive after two years. There's no statistical significance to the results, you know, whatever might be put forward. So it really just comes down to a popularity contest, and there are those that love it, those that dislike it. But to go for two more years, that's resources. I mean, that's staff time, effort, paying consultants to count things here and there. And it's not putting pedestrians first. You know, back to previous comments about Progressive, they're about moving vehicles, motor vehicles, and we, as a city, have claimed to be about, you know, pedestrians and cyclists, and especially in the downtown area, pedestrians. And if all of this effort were being put into helping pedestrians, we could actually make some real progress. But when... What I see happening here, and it's similar to discussions I had with city manager Marty Colburn prior to the first two-year pilot, was what about all the new turning movements and the new turn lanes that will be needed? And that didn't really get much traction as far as discussion, but now we're seeing that in action, and people calling for, hey, we need a left-turn lane here, or a right-turn lane there. And so that's just impacts pedestrian safety even more, whether it's real or perceived. But when you have to cross more traffic lanes and there's more conflict points, it's just... It's not helpful for pedestrians. So I see this as a, frankly, a waste of time and effort.
Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I do two. First of all, the two... The first year of this extension is, again, we have all this reconstruction going on on the Parkway, so your numbers are all skewed. I definitely feel that there is missing data on the amount of bike crashes and injuries that are happening on State Street. My son was hit twice this summer, and, you know, he didn't report it. Somebody else at Amica was also hit. She didn't report it. There's a lot going on in State Street that's not getting reported. And I have to just wonder if we don't already have enough public input to start making some decisions on our own without having to go through the Progressive two-year... I don't see any budget for this, but I have to assume that it's going to cost money for Progressive to collect data. Again, we're working on this complete streets policy. I've been advocated for using, you know, temper... Let's, you know, we know what's working, we know what's not working, definitely. That's really what's happening on State Street, is things are not working. Can't we use paint and delineator and just temporary stuff and see if we can make some things work? You know, some curb bump outs. We were sent a really interesting video from Hoboken, which was about just doing simple incremental things and see what happens. And if it doesn't work, then you haven't spent any money. You can make changes. The... I see that there's a budget, a possible budget item for the stoplights at $25,000. Maybe we don't need stoplights. Maybe we need just four-way stop signs. Much simpler to put in. Let's see how that works. Let's see. Skeptical about this commercial property tax revenue increases that are cited by Progressive as, you know, being a big win, because all property appraisals have just gone... Appreciation has gone crazy over the last two years. Very skeptical of the goal of providing better connectivity to the grid. Again, this is all about cars, and Front Street is a destination. State Street is a natural extension of that destination. And, you know, you don't want to get... To have drivers stuck and making circles, which I think happened when you had State Street as a one-way. They couldn't get where they wanted to go. There was no place to park or whatever, and they were making circles. We don't want that. And we don't... I think that disallowing left-hand turns on State Street would make the same problem. You just have people making circles. But so I think that, from my experience and from what I've heard from other people, the two-way has worked to get people back and forth through town and making less circles and less congestion problem. But it's only really worked for cars. The alternative modes of transportation are not receiving that same favor. And also, you know, on the Mobility Action Plan, on page 35, you know, it's very clearly marked, State Street, as a place to avoid, even though those same areas are also marked as low-stress streets on page 37, which probably means that nobody actually rides their bike there, because they're so horrible. But these streets are also, and they're cross streets, are singled out for the Vision Bike Network, and none of that has happened over these two years. So, you know, deliveries is another problem that's happening. Why haven't we had, over these two years, why has so little happened, these incrementally small changes to try and make it better? I'm very disappointed. So I'm not... I am not interested in hiring Progressive for another two years. What is the downside of letting the pilot elapse and having our own engineering and planning department start, with the completion of the streets, complete streets policy, start making some changes on our own? And as far as Front Street goes, it absolutely does not align in any way with the complete streets policy that we're working on, so I can't support that at all.
So I have a question to clarify some comments you made, Commissioner Shaw, as we're having the conversation, is, you know, this was a two-year. One of the reasons that we've stated in the past was wanting at least a one-year extension was a non-traffic, you know, heavier traffic because of the construction on MDOT. You know, I'm just throwing that out there, if people were interested in more of one year versus two. But you mentioned doing bump outs and lights that are versus four-ways, and bump outs are more than... Because I agree with what you were saying about paint. You know, like, if we did extend it a year, could we do some paint? Could we do some of that to get a better feel? Bump outs are a bigger investment than paint.
Yeah, but you do a paint bump out.
I see what you mean. Okay, you're talking about a paint bump out. Just wanted to clarify.
And if they were, then you can make a real one.
And then lights versus four-ways, I would be interested because of traffic, at a certain point of traffic volume, four-ways become a little more dangerous, because people are not as attentive. But I agree with what you're saying about what's... That's where, I guess, I'm asking, are we saying we don't want to extend it at all, or would we be interested in a year to get a little bit more data on things like lights and bump outs, but maybe not do the full two-year? Is that... They're just gauging where that's at.
But who's running the pilot, then?
Okay, that's...
So I guess my question is, if we don't extend the pilot, when does the current pilot end? Has it ended? And then if we don't extend a pilot, unless we take some kind of other action through some kind of other resolution, what happens next? Does this revert to... Does State Street revert to one-way? So if we fail to approve this this evening, is there someone who can describe what happens next?
I'll ask Carrie to join us, please. Got a couple of questions here from both Commissioner Shaw and Stanley.
Hi, Harry Burkholder with the D-
Hi, Harry Burkholder with the DDA. Commissioner Stanley, to your question, I think that's a conversation that the DDA needs to have with the city. The city made this decision through a TCO order that was approved by the city commission. So if that has expired, then it's the decision of the city commission to pursue the extension or not. The DDA is just here as a recommending body to the city commission. We are still recommending the two-year extension, which is outlined in the memo. But ultimately, that decision will be up to the city commission. In terms of some of the comments related to speed, what I talked about, the study session, we have seen a slight decrease in speed along that State Street corridor. We've also seen a, a very significant dip in the amount of excessive speed. So I hear mixed messages. We don't want to count the data, we don't want to take the data, but we're also going to reference the data when we talk about safety. I think what we said all along as part of this pilot project, that was predicated on your approval, is that we would take the data. So the, the work with Progressive over the next year or two years is part of this pilot, is to essentially collect and analyze the data. All the decisions in terms of the physical modifications to the street has been done in collaboration with all of our city partners around the table. So it's not been done just by Progressive in a silo. It's been all of us working together. And that's not to say that we can't try other things as part of this pilot extension.
So I was not here when the state was changed from one-way to two-way. But I imagine it took coordinated effort to make all those changes with the paint on the street, the lights, the signage. So if this weren't to be extended, the, the TCO is expired, but it would take time with the whole team to coordinate that, communicate that to the community, and then make those appropriate changes to, to revert back. So I, I think we'd have to reverse engineer however the road got switched to begin with. That's my understanding.
So, but if, if there were things that we want, that this body wanted to see modified, such as a four-way stop rather than a traffic light, some painted bump outs, as Commissioner Shaw was requesting in some locations, what would be the process? So if, so could we not approve extending the pilot? But, this is a traffic control order, so if, but the traffic control order has expired, could we extend the traffic control order without extending the pilot and request those other modifications?
So I think one question to consider is then, who is paying for those modifications? So all the modifications done to date through the pilot have been paid for by DDA and TIF. So if the DDA is not involved, and this is now a city-only project, then those modifications, so then would be the responsibility of the city.
That's helpful information, thank you.
So, just to kind of bring this conversation to back to a higher, because we don't have a motion right now, but we're working towards some kind of motions or action, it sounds like. What's on the table right now is technically, although there doesn't seem much appetite for it, extending the pilot for two years to get that data. Potentially extending it for one year to get that data and to allow the complete streets to finish. Or letting it expire and then having us essentially ad hoc it from the commission of what we like and don't like and would want to see on that street. And, and do those on our own, starting basically now since it's already an expired TCO. Those seem to be our options. So with that in mind, are, do people have thoughts on any of those as far as where they favor? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather see the traffic control order ended and to return it to one-way. There, there's more opportunity, there's limited right-of-way. There'll be more parking. We've already eliminated some parallel parking to do this. It's not a lot, but we could have more parking along the sides. You can have safer bike lane in the eastbound direction without as many conflicts. Part of the bike lane was already eliminated to allow for a turning lane. Just the conflict points, and then the opportunity going forward to invest in improvements for pedestrians. And the focus can be on pedestrians and not about circulation. Essentially, this was used as detour during the Parkway project. And I appreciate the honesty of the DDA member who shared that, you know, back when it got going.
Other comments? Go ahead, Heather.
I would be in support of extending a pilot without collecting data, without the, the data collection from Progressive for one year, keeping it, the street two-way. Because my experience is, it is, it's so much easier to get back and forth across town, no matter if you're walking, biking, or taking a car, it's having State Street two-way. And Rotary Square, if we're gonna, we have it, whether we like it or not. And Rotary Square needs a two-way street in front of it, or it's just not going to get enough people using it as it should. But, um, take, and then running the project, trying some things, let's work with, let's, these are things that our engineer and our planning director, the design team, they have the knowledge to, to do this with complete streets or an ad hoc or something. Let's do it for one year.
Just to clarify, though, are you, because it's, the pilot as part of that is the data collection. If we just want to make it ad hoc by the city commission, then really what it sounds like we would do is let the, the traffic expire, or, sorry, the pilot expire, the traffic control expire, make a direction to have it two-way, and then build a commissioner-generated data point. And I shouldn't say data point, because it won't be data from commissioners, it would be opinions.
We can't call it a pilot, even if we're...
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be the pilot that we're talking about, because the pilot we're talking, I don't know. What's your thought on that, Harry, if it was a pilot without the data collection?
In my opinion, if you're going to do anything with the street, at some point, you want to evaluate whether it's working or not working. So the idea that we're just going to abdicate data collection doesn't make any sense to me. Whether Progressive does it, the DDA does it, or the city does it, seems to make sense that you want to aggregate some data to see if what you're doing, whether it's minor or major, is working. So that's a decision about who does the data, that's, you know, we can have that conversation. Right now, the DDA is offering to pay for that data collection and analysis as part of this pilot. So if that's something the city chooses to do, then that's a city decision. But I would suggest that we continue to collect and analyze the data to see if what we're doing is actually working.
And, sorry, really quick to clarify, to that end, one more year of it would be a year of data then, without the MDOT redirection of traffic, et cetera, so that would give a different baseline?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, okay. Go ahead, sorry, Heather, I cut you off.
Well, I was just gonna say, it's just that next year, this coming year, it's, you know, it's more chaos because of the Parkway. So I, the data isn't, isn't as valuable as it would be the year after that. But, okay.
There's no reason why the city couldn't keep, continue to collect data after this pilot's done and Progressive's out of it. What I'm saying is, let's not abdicate collecting data as we go through this entire process.
All right, all right. That's fine. No Front Street, though?
No Front Street.
And, and, and city commission ad hoc to talk about rough spots and what we can do to help people where they're struggling.
Okay, would we want that in, like, to be established six months into the renewal? You know, we're saying that the data we got last year doesn't help us because of the construction. And I, so I would hate to have an ad hoc formed immediately and say, start studying something when you don't have the data. We want to actually have hands-on for permanent change. So would that be something that would be, if we didn't...
We don't need any more data. We've had, we've had two years of data collection and two years of, of user experience. We know, we know where the, the problem spots are.
I guess what I, what I talked about the study session is that the, the data has shown, if we just talk about speed, it's very small, but the trend is showing that the speed is getting slower on that street. So if we want to continue to see trends over time, again, whether the DDA does the data collection or the city does the data collection, if the street is going to be two-way and we're going to make additional modifications, I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't collect data, whoever, who does it?
That's fine. No, I'm saying, that's fine. It's just that I don't, I think that we know...
You're saying some of what we have already is still useful?
That we can try next year immediately, the stop signs, the painted bump outs, um...
I would say those are things we know we can discuss. I hesitate for us to say that we think it should, everything should go to four-way stops without getting some real professional opinions in it before taking out traffic lights. But yes, have those as already, ready-to-go topics of conversation for an ad hoc? Great, okay, I see what you're saying. Just wanted to clarify before we went ahead.
I would just also mention that I would have a conversation with the engineering department on whether they have the expertise to make those traffic modifications or feel confident in doing that without additional support. I think one of the benefits that we had with working Progressive is that they brought some of that expertise to this larger discussion. So if they're not involved, whether it's Progressive or another company, then I would have a conversation with the engineering department to make sure that they are okay with them being kind of on point for those decisions and those changes. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they're not here, so.
So, yeah, and so to clarify where you're at, Heather, just so I can, is maybe a one-year extension with an ad hoc that's analyzing the data we already have and anything else? Or no extra data is what you're asking for?
Well, Progressive is going to be providing the...
Okay, so you want to keep Progressive for this year, because we talked about a couple of different options. I was just clarifying where you're standing. Okay, perfect, I got, I got it. I just wanted to clarify, make sure I was summarizing correctly. Go ahead, Jackie.
I thought that Commissioner Warner made a really good point about how having two-directional vehicle traffic really limits our ability to do anything meaningful for pedestrian and bicyclist safety. It's, it, the quarters are too tight. There just isn't enough room. And at this point, based on the data that we've seen, without any really dramatic improvements against the goals that were identified, I'm in favor of continuing to allow the TCO to lapse, to reverting to one-way traffic on state, and then to put it in the hands of our, our city staff and explore some of the incremental sorts of safety-oriented solutions for pedestrians and bicyclists that, that might be able to be temporary installations and that, and that we can essentially laboratory it without investing large amounts of money. I, I think another year or two years of data is, is, there will always be external factors to be considered that are going to skew the data one way or another. And I, I don't really see a lot of benefit to two more years of, of experience or collection of data that I, I'm having a hard time thinking that we would see anything dramatically different enough in the next two years to mitigate what we've already experienced.
Okay, Jackie.
Can I just add one, one point to that? I, I think it's in the Mobility Action Plan, and it's, you know, things that we've talked about as a city. I don't see how reducing traffic speed impedes public safety or pedestrian safety. By slowing the traffic, we are making that roadway and those public realms safer for pedestrians. Are there going to be additional points of conflict on some of those terms? Yes, but we're also going at a much slower speed, and we're talking about modifying some of those signals. So there's a balance to there, to that.
The question is, how do you define much slower?
Excuse me, so Commissioner Stanley and then Heather, but first, the city manager wanted to chime in.
You know, obviously, you know, this is a good discussion. And this is sort of the first that I'm hearing that it would become like a city project, not a city DDA pilot. The engineering department has currently 70 projects on their plates, seven-zero. So I just think that that needs to be a part of this discussion on how the team would be able to manage that and, like, how long it would take. And I just want to manage those expectations, because they are working on many, many projects right now.
Good, Commissioner Stanley.
Thank you, City Manager Vogel. I was, I was going to ask about what the capacity of city staff, particularly planning and engineering, would be to take on these projects. And I also would like to remind this body that we have repeatedly, and some, with good reason from time to time, but also sometimes, apparently for aesthetic reasons, voted against the very recommendations of the staff that we are considering as charging with creating an entirely new design plan around slowing traffic speeds and creating improved experiences for non-motor vehicle travel. So I certainly think that they're allowing a traffic order to lapse and having to undo all of this work mid, at this juncture, or shift the responsibility to the city staff when they, when their capacity is lacking, seems like a very poor way to approach resolving this scenario. So I'm going to make a motion that the city commission extends Traffic Control Order 703, which provides for two-way circulation on State Street. And I'm going to say through December 31st, 2025.
Do you have a second? Okay, seeing none. Go ahead, Heather.
I was just going to, to respond to Commissioner Anderson's comment that we're only talking about a one-year extension on the pilot. And, um, you know, we could get kind of creative about how to handle bikers on State Street and keeping it two-way by eliminating parking on one side.
To, really to bring up the point really quick, Commissioner Shaw, you're kind of talking about a one-year, and I don't know if it was caught, that that's what Commissioner Stanley just made the motion for? So you, you didn't want to do that, though, to have it go for one more year extension? She said through December 31st of 2025, so that would give us two through November or something if the weather was nicer.
Oh, but no, no mention of the establishing an ad hoc, that's not necessary?
Would you like to make that as an amendment to the motion that Commissioner Stanley made?
May I make a friendly amendment?
Well, you'd second, and then we, well, yes, would you like to second the motion so it's on the floor?
I will second the motion.
Okay, and then you'd like to make a friendly amendment of creating a city commission ad hoc to study the information from the pilot?
Is that the scope?
Or to make recommendations regarding pedestrian and bicycle flow?
Accessibility?
Accessibility?
That's, that's fine.
That's great, okay. Is that friendly?
That's friendly.
Okay, great, thank you.
So can I just clarify, does that mean no, no Progressive and no data analysis?
No, that would be for one year, but instead of two, yeah.
So one year is 10 months from December 31st, 2025. So then, just for procedures, so we can maybe get a placeholder on a future agenda, then when would, if it's going to expire December 31st, 2025, when would we want to have that come back to the body?
Probably early in '26 sometime.
Early in 2026?
I mean, we'd have the updates from the ad hoc along the way and...
Well, I, I think really you'd want to have the updates before the traffic control order expires, because technically, you know, we shouldn't have them expire, right? The city commission should be taking up that decision before that time.
Okay, well, we will trust staff to go along as, as needed between the DDA and the city.
Look at it in November when everybody has cleared out.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Warner.
Yeah, the topic of slower speed and two-way traffic, like, that's finally getting to what are we trying to accomplish? Like, if what we're trying to accomplish is slower motor vehicle speed, let's say that. And then we can talk to experts about what are all the ways that we can slow motor vehicle speed for pedestrian safety instead of backing into it and using it as an excuse for the preferred design? Like, let's, let's say what it is we're trying to achieve, and then talk to the experts and work toward it. I'm not in support of extending this for a year, because, again, it, it will take resources from our engineering and planning departments, even if we have Progressive AE involved. We have other things to do, other things to work on, and it's a distraction.
So I'm going to say, though, that I guess I'm taking a slight bit of exception, but that when we started the whole conversation about the two-way pilot at the city commission level, and even in 2020 when we had it with the closing of Front Street, the conversation always included information, not the direct, you know, nobody was out there saying it was the sole direct purpose, that to slow the traffic down. And so I don't understand quite where that's coming from, that that's, we're backing into it when that's always been one of the stated goals of this.
Now it's being used as an excuse for why we should keep it. There are many ways we could get slower traffic. So we shouldn't be keeping it two-way just because traffic might be in, statistically insignificantly slower. There's other ways to accomplish that. That might be the way, but let's have that discussion about what are all the ways and, but not tonight.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Does anybody have any other questions right now? Or other comments?
Mayor, the other thing I want to point out is, you see in the memo, we are pursuing with the city engineering department, the... pursuing with the city engineering department the potential for two mid-block crosswalks on the 100 block and 200 block of State Street, which would serve as another traffic calming measure and provide for additional pedestrian access. I still think that's something we're going to pursue whether this goes one-way or two-way or not. There would be, be helpful to have some clarity on the ad hoc committee and what it's charged to do in relation to with how the design team and processes work to date. Right now, those decisions are collectively made by DDA city staff with the help of progressive. And so I'm curious how that works with the ad hoc committee, if that's what's created.
That, I mean, we, we've made this on the spot here, I guess I would say. So if that's okay with everybody, we could work out the details of, does the design team bring that to before, like as a preamble to the commission, or is it the commission as a body, or how that would look? Or that's going to be the commission, the ad hoc would give information to the design team based on feedback that they're getting from other sources? I'm curious where that, their thought was going with that, Commissioner Shaw.
I don't know, because, you know, this is all kind of on the fly as well.
Yeah.
But it has come up in the complete streets meetings that the city could use an ad hoc with different user groups contributing information and suggestions and experience to, to help design these problem areas. And the four-way stop signs was a way, was a point that came up rather than the $25,000 signals and the painted bump outs. Paint, paint and bollards.
Okay.
Or delineators or whatever you call them.
Okay. Well, I think we'll do this, my suggestion right now would be to have the conversation about the ad hoc when it is established of what that might look like, get some input from staff, as well as commissioner input at that time. This was made up on the fly, so we can see what that scope could look, if that's okay with the person who made the friendly amendment. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments right now? The one thing I just wanted to comment was, having been a lifelong resident here, I know that we had the data showing that it's only incrementally brought down the speeds. And this is anecdotal, but I think a lot of what we deal with is anecdotal. Cruising the gut at, you know, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, like, used to happen. There's no way that people were only going 27 miles an hour. And when we talk about pedestrian safety, you talked about, Commissioner Shaw mentioned people who don't call in with what's happening now, and I agree that we need to continue to improve if we keep this two ways. There were so many people that would get hit by doors opening with the, with the parking on both sides of the streets when they would be trying to do the safer one-way on, on State Street that weren't the most experienced bikers, and even ones that I knew who were. You know, we don't teach the Dutch look when we teach drivers to buckle up their seatbelt, so people don't look and see what's coming behind them. And so, you know, I'm not saying that we don't have room to explore and that, you know, we have on the table right now a year more of study with some more information and how this might become more functional. But I also don't want to romanticize that we had this beautiful one-way street that allowed for access. And I know Commissioner Warner is saying that we could fix that, but we also have a staff that doesn't have a ton of extra time right now. And we have a lot of volume on that street, we think right now. Now, the next year might show us that there's not the volume we think without construction, and maybe we do need to go back to two-way and find some money to reinvest in that. But I think that that's, I just wanted to point out that two, the two-way on State Street wasn't, you know, the safety haven either. So, or sorry, one, one-way. One-way, sorry. I'm so, two-way, one-way, two-way. One-way wasn't the safety haven either that a lot of people did get nicked and dinged. And there was a lot of speeding that maybe just didn't happen between 11:00 AM and noon on a random November day in 2018, you know? So just adding that two cents. So with that, are there any other questions or comments right now? Okay, with that, I'm going to open up for a public comment then. Do you have any public comment on this item?
Justin Reed, City Resident. I don't know on how the MDOT construction is going to affect downtown because it's moving down from Division down to Cherry Bend Road on Grandview Parkway. So that's further down. And like I said, I don't know on how that would affect downtown because it's not like it was last year in, from Garfield to down to Division. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
I would like to just, to make it totally clear, I'd like to read back the motion as I understand it. And that is that the city commission extends traffic control order 703, which provides for a two-way circulation on State Street through December 31st, 2025, with the city commission to establish an ad hoc committee at a March 2025. I've made a few modifications, I think, with your spirit. But to establish an ad hoc committee at a March 2025 meeting to make a recommendation with the scope to be established upon the ad hoc committee's establishment. And my thought was just to provide staff the opportunity to develop what we think that scope is. But you would obviously approve it because we want to make sure that the ad hoc is working on what you want it to be. Is that acceptable to Commissioner Stanley and Shaw? Okay.
Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you.
Did you want to have a comment? Okay. I'll call the question then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Warner?
No.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes. Okay, with that, motion passes. We'll move on now to the resident, I can't talk, sorry. The sewer system revenue bonds update. I'll hand that off to you, Liz.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm pulling up my memos here.
Mine's coming up too.
Thank you. This has been before the commission. Two years ago, the board approved the issuance of bonds up to 30 million. And we are asking for now the board to approve the city's intention to issue a total of 42, not to exceed 42 million in sewer system revenue bonds. And we do have our Director of Municipal Utilities here with us this evening to answer any questions, Mr. Art Krueger.
Hi, good evening. Art Krueger, Director of Utilities. This item is basically part of the process for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan process that we've been working through for this large project at the wastewater treatment plant, as you're probably aware. And it's really just to provide a ceiling amount for bonds to, to cover the cost. There's some conservative numbers hopefully in here. You know, we haven't gone to bid yet, and we're at about a 90% design. This is an estimate. The trade portion, all the different trades involve concrete and so forth, need to be bid out yet in, in the next coming months. So it does include $2.2 million of preliminary design contract dollars that have already been approved and we're working through that design process. In the past, we've added this design cost to the loan amount to get reimbursed, so to speak. So we're fronting that money upfront from the sewer fund. So coming up in early March, I'm planning to bring forth some information, more deeper dive details and so forth, to where we're at with this project and the cost. But this is just, the goal here for this item is to establish that upper limit for bonding and looking at 42 million to be on the safe side.
Do you have questions for Art right now? Go ahead, Tim.
What do you think the chances are that the off-gassing will be reduced by all these improvements? So we'll have fewer days of smells from the wastewater treatment plant. That would be amazing if it happens. Order control has been discussed, implementing what we can with this project. There isn't necessarily a new system trying to be introduced. The cost would go up even higher, but we're trying to, to capture, you know, as adequately and efficiently as we can. There, that's kind of a separate study that's being formulated right now, a proposal and so forth, to, to look at the order control at a better, closer level.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
Art, could you just remind us of what led to the, the increase in bonding amount from 30 million in 2022 to 42 million now?
Yeah, going back, 30 million was actually passed, I believe, early in the five-year plan process. We got our first loan in 2022. So we were using data from 2021 information. We'd just come off COVID. I don't think we saw the inflationary effects so quickly. It was building as we were going through this process. So we did get one loan successfully, and we built the sewer relocation along the river wall, pulled that back along, between, you know, Union and Cass Street. And then we reinforced the wall where the sewer still sits behind it on the next block to the east, so between Cass and Park. And that was about 2.75 million, I believe, we used up of the 30 million. So that left about 27 or so available out of that ceiling. As we've been moving through this process with the large wastewater project, we've seen increase in costs due to inflation and just getting into the details more. You know, for one recent instance, we found that the geotechnical work came back and the groundwater level is a pretty big factor in designing the clarifiers, these circular clarifiers. And they're like 20 feet deep from the surface. So there's little more attention needed for, say, the foundation to keep this, these structures from floating. If we were to drain them down, and they would be empty for maintenance, which would occur in the future, not probably that often, but when that vessel of water was emptied out, it could float and cause damage. So there's more concrete and steel. They're talking about having to be put in there for ballast and so forth. So as we get through these details, things come up. And that, that was a, a cost factor that we're being told is almost a million dollars to add. Now, we're, we're working on that for value engineering. We're trying to come up with better ways to do it if we can to save money. But this, this amount does include a 6% contingency and the construction engineering, which is estimated at 700,000. So hopefully that helps you understand where we were. And now, four years later, this is what we're looking at.
It does. Thank you. It's, it's not a matter that the scope has expanded greatly. It's just, you know, we're learning more, we're getting smarter, we're refining specs, and we're subject to inflation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excellent point. If only we weren't, right? Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, I, I had a lot of questions for Art, and he answered all of them very nicely. But I'm always worried about capacity. And, you know, we've got, we've all, got all these subdivisions going in, we've got these hotels going in, not here in the city, but out in the, in the townships that use our wastewater treatment plant. And who keeps track of all of that? Do you have like a jar that you fill with pennies so that you know when you're getting to the top and it's not going to work anymore? Who watches that?
As far as the plant capacity?
Yeah, and, and the construction that's going on all around Trevers.
Well, we, we definitely are tracking flows, and that reflects what we've seen in the past, you know, five years, 10 years. We can compare flows coming to the plant, and they have gone up some. We saw a bigger increase from groundwater and surface water entering the sanitary sewers, INI infiltration and flow during the 2020 and 2021 high-water years. That has significantly tapered off. But, so, so we, we measure flows daily and we're watching it closely. And as I replied in, in the email to you, you know, we're running at about 53% with the average flow for the year, say in 2024.
Right, but summer flow has to be much higher than that. But when somebody's, you know, like, aren't we, don't we have like a thousand hotel rooms coming online this year? You've got the new subdivisions going out on Three Mile or Four Mile or, who, I mean, doesn't somebody say, well, you know, we've got 2,000 more residences coming up? How is the plant going to handle that? Does anybody look at the future? You know, you're just talking about what's coming in. This is our flow for this month, and this is our, but what about the future?
I'm implying that if we're at 53% of the available capacity, we still have 47%
But 53% is the average over the year. In, in the summertime, it's got to be higher than that.
It doesn't spike much. That's a pretty good number. And we have up to eight and a half million a day capacity, and we're running around 4.4. It does spike occasionally, like, you know, if we get a rain event and we have INI occurring, we can handle up to 17.17 million gallons a day at a peak rate. Not for days and days at a time, but we can handle that over a day if it does occur. And during 20 and 20, 2020 and 21, we did handle that, I believe it was like a 17.4 million flow rate for about.
But the answer is still not coming in. Like, who's watching the penny jar?
I think Jacobs is a huge team player with us in looking at capacities. They have that kind of information in their monthly reports.
I do, I read their monthly reports, and I don't see, these things are coming online. I don't see anything in there.
Well, it's, it's really like, there's available capacity out in the system, and we're seeing what actually comes in. So it's, you can estimate all you want out there, which is a, a good tool to use for future forecasting. But we're actually looking at what's coming in. And when we start building closer and closer, you know, we're not going to wait till the last minute when we don't have any capacity left. We're going to plan for it well ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yeah, I would say that it's worth keeping in mind, we can have more housing units, more hotels getting built, but if they are using water-efficient low-flush toilets and other efficient devices, they may actually be using less water per capita than some of our older houses, as well as when older houses get renovated with more updated and efficient appliances. That results in less water use. We have seen from our presentation about water billing that we have a significantly higher water usage in summer, but that's because of people irrigating, not because we have a whole lot more toilets getting flushed. Yes, we have more people in the city during the summer, but we also don't have the student populations that represent a significant ebb and flow in a daily basis this time of year. We've got college, we've got high school, we've got elementary schools that house many students that do not live in the city limits. So they come into the city, they use the bathroom, they flush those toilets, it still runs to the sewer treatment plant, but they're not using those toilets and flushing to the same extent during the summer. And the metric that we should be using is not how many square feet of housing or even how many toilets there are. It's how many gallons per day are coming into the sewer treatment plant. And staff is assuring us we have the capacity and the charts bear that out.
Thank you, Mitch. Good point. Go ahead, Tim.
I'll make the motion that the notice of intent resolution sewer system revenue bonds, Clean Water State Revolving Fund project, which articulates the city's intent to issue and sell revenue bonds payable from revenues of the system under Act 94, in an additional amount of $14,725,000 for a total remaining amount not to exceed $42 million to be adopted.
Support.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Warner and Treadwell. Any other questions at this time for Art or in general? Or any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open it up to public comment then. Thank you, Art.
Thank you very much.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, we have a motion to go into closed session about some of the cyber incidents we're still dealing with. This would be after general public comment, correct?
Yes, and there is anticipated action.
After.
After that closed session, which will be a recommendation from the city's insurance provided defense counsel.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that the City Commission enter into closed session immediately following the public comment portion of the agenda to discuss an attorney-client privilege, excuse me, an attorney-client communication in connection with the June 2024 cyber incident as required by MCL 15.268H.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. And any further comments on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Do we have to do a roll call on this?
We do.
Yes, thank you. I remembered this time.
Good job. Commissioner Stanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Warner.
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor Pro-Tim Wilson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
And Mayor Shamro.
Yes. All right. We will go into closed session after general public comment with anticipated action after, for those following around, following us on the procedures here. Moving on to new business, we are going to discuss the proposed Housing Commission proposal for East Eighth Street. And I'll have Liz get it off.
Thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yep, we, this evening, we welcome Carl Fulmer, the Director of the Traverse City Housing Commission, to give a presentation on a development proposal that is before the city tonight.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone. Are we going to have overheads at all or not? It doesn't matter.
Okay, I wasn't aware you had any.
No, no, I submitted, well, I think it was just miscommunication. But I'll talk briefly in your board packets or commission packets. I did provide some maps regarding the potential site for what we're calling City View Apartments, potentially. We've put the Copy Central Parcel at 314 East Eighth Street under contract. We did that in December of 2024. For potentially, we've worked with the County and County Land Bank up to this point as well, potentially unifying some public land to draw into that point three one acre parcel to build ultimately forty to fifty units of workforce housing is our intent at this point in time. There's a lot of work to be done in the next twelve to eighteen months to really plan out a potential project. What we are asking the city for is, there's a small triangular parcel that's approximately point zero five acres adjacent to the Copy Central Parcel on, at 314 East Eighth Street. In addition, we'd be looking for a portion of some old railroad right-of-way that's now held by the County Land Bank to be rolled into effectively a parcel that's between point seven five and point nine acres, depending on what we ultimately decide. And so tonight, I am coming before the commission to ask the commission to approve rolling in potentially the small point zero five triangular-shaped parcel, as well as, and I don't know the legalese for this, so perhaps the city attorney can assist, with foregoing its rights, future rights to a portion of the old railroad right-of-way that the County Land Bank currently holds. There is a map that I've kind of, we kind of drew out the potential site for the workforce housing project. So with that, I'll certainly answer any questions. As I said, we have the parcel under contract, the Copy Central Parcel. We have a rather long due diligence period drawn into the contract, which allows us to certainly, Consumers Energy has some high-powered lines on the old railroad right-of-way. We'd want to slightly relocate some of the line, some of the poles to the west to accommodate the building and parking structures that might go on the parcel. But with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
If you have any questions, go ahead, Heather.
Hi, I'm supportive of this. But I, I'm not aware that there's a, like, universal definition of workforce housing. So what exactly are you talking about?
Well, what we're talking about is housing that's really essentially designed, one, two-bedroom units that meet forty to sixty percent income levels, which, based on our calculations, would be a lot of the service workers that support downtown Traverse City and certainly Grand Traverse County in general. There isn't, I guess, a definition for it. I apologize, but.
Well, usually they use like eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, or, you know, they talk about AMI in some way.
So you're saying forty to sixty percent AMI?
Forty, sixty percent AMI presently, which is really catering to service sector employment workforce. And it would be, we'd be pursuing nine percent low-income housing tax credits, which require two and a half percent of your income typically to support the payment of the rents, because they would be set, set rents at the property for those income levels.
At the strategic planning meeting that I attended this morning, former Commissioner Chrissy Minin-Vini was there and talking about the possibility of when the city does grant, grant pilots for these, for low, for workforce housing, or whatever you want to call it, that a certain amount of very low-income housing is provided as a stipulation for granting that pilot. I thought that was a good idea. This is already much lower than what we normally see, but it's something to think about maybe when the pilot comes around.
That'd be definitely something to think about with our workforce housing pilot, which is different than, has different terms than others' pilots we issue, correct?
It does, but it sounds like the Housing Commission's looking at a mis-staffed funded light ticket.
So that would be the lower. Yep, okay.
And understand, we're still in the infancy of this potential project. We've got quite a few months to go before we really start to envision how it's going to be designed and laid out. There's, just approaching Consumers Energy is enough of a hurdle right now. But we think it's a very good site, potentially, for this type of use, and we're excited about the potential for it.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes. As a member of the Housing Commission, this is not my first time seeing this. And this is a project in its infancy, so I appreciate that the recommendation before the city is perhaps intentionally rather vague and nonspecific as some of the details. But I do have to dig into some of the details. We do have identified a city-owned parcel as a triangle of land with a parcel number and address. However, I can find plat maps for the city that also identify 306 Eighth Street as a similar small triangle of land, parcel number fifty-seven dash six eight two dash zero zero four dash two oh. So I should hope that there's, in various documents, enough ambiguity to cover that being two parcels or being one parcel. Also, I want to, since there's other property under by the city, 316 and 318 Eighth Street, that yes, the whole of either parcel would not be eligible, but depending on what is available, if the city's share of this was able to provide flexibility for some of that land to be available for not just driveway access, as is now, but potentially parking or development itself, I would like that to be included as well.
Okay. Just to clarify, though, that what's before us today is only the triangle. That's the, seems to be, and I'll look to Lauren for a huddnap because you raised that point, the 308 and 306, correct?
It just refers to the parcel that is identified as 308.
Right. So I'd agree with, you know, if that, if that moves forward, if there's some other space without taking out the tart trail, I think that would be something that'd be open for bringing back to the Commission.
But the resolution does not mention the triangle even, so it says necessary documents.
I'll let Lauren investigate that while Tim asks his question. Sorry.
Yeah, and some of my questions had preliminary answers I submitted by email, so thank you. Are you able to share, for your purchase contract, what the purchase price will be for the copy shop? Is that public?
Not at this point. However, we did have a commercial broker that represented the commission in negotiating the purchase price for the property. We also, as I said, it is basically under contract for market value.
Okay. Well, yeah, that's fair enough to know it's market value. So they're not donated a third, donated a third of the value or something like that?
No, they are not.
Okay, that's fair.
I will say this, though. They are willing, they're willing to be very patient and carry the property and the cost to carry for a long period.
Okay, thank you. And then, back to the, whether it's, we refer to it as zero to thirty percent AMI or permanent supportive housing. I'm very much in favor of that, and I would rather see that be part of conveying the property than trying to modify an existing pilot policy to include that. I feel like this is the opportunity when we convey the property. Maybe we provide wiggle room, but encourage, to the extent possible, to include ten percent of the units being in that zero thirty percent. So this is not necessarily for you to respond, but sharing with my colleagues as, again, maybe we don't lock you into that, but somehow convey, and I guess attorneys don't really, it's either black or white probably, so we can't strongly encourage.
Could I address that just briefly?
Yeah, please.
We've already run some financial modeling for the potential property. One of the issues presently that we have with permanent supportive housing units, the Housing Commission, in the past few years, has issued project-based vouchers to specific developers interested in project, or in permanent supportive housing units. We're at our thirty percent cap by HUD. We can't issue more project-based vouchers. So to do the permanent supportive housing units and to have individuals with no income move into the property, we don't have the vouchers to project-based presently.
Okay.
So it's problematic to commit to it tonight or.
All right.
But.
So maybe we encourage it.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure.
Fair enough. And then I also had questions about the 316 and 318 properties, which currently have a driveway over these city parcels, assuming that you'll want to have that available and you're not foregoing that.
We're not foregoing it. However, we're looking at different ways to access the property, whether it be a loop drive through from Lake Street through to Eighth Street. I had very cursory conversations with Sean Winter a few months ago, and I know that the city planning staff wants to limit, limit curb cuts on Eighth Street as much as possible. So that's certainly something that has to be tackled in the next twelve to eighteen months as well.
And maybe along the lines of what Commissioner Treadwell was saying, if you don't need it as driveway, maybe you come back to this body and we abandon, together abandon the easement, but convey part of the property to your development to be put to some other use that assists. And then, not so much a question, but final comment. Are you aware of the City Commission's electrification policy that goes with conveying land?
I am. We discussed it for our Orchard View, Orchard View project.
Thank you. Just sometimes that gets not acknowledged soon enough, and then it becomes not too late, but more difficult if it's not in from the very start. So thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions at this time? And I'm sorry, I've lost the plot of it. Do we have a motion yet? Or I would take a motion if we don't have one yet.
We don't have one yet.
Okay. I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the necessary documents with Traverse City Housing Commission and/or Grand Traverse County Land Bank authority in connection with the workforce housing project at 314 East Eighth Street, as outlined in the February seventh, 2025 communication from the city attorney. Such documents subject to approval as to form by the city attorney and as to substance by the city manager. And further, that to the extent possible, the Traverse City Housing Commission try to include permanent supportive housing at ten percent of units.
Support.
Okay. We'll give that to Treadwell.
Treadwell.
You win. In acknowledgement of his service on the Housing Commission.
Okay.
I don't know. It was just a draw. Okay, so is the language in that loose enough since we do have some concerns about the vouchers and other aspects?
To the extent possible. Was that enough?
To the extent possible.
That's, I just want to make sure. I know that was your intention to just put it in there in spirit, so I just want to make sure. Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anybody from public? Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Doug Hickman. I am a property owner and a board member of the Riverine Condominiums, which sits right down to the east of the property that we're talking about. We've looked at this, and we're still looking for, you know, some clarification on some of these different parcel numbers that go on. We know the triangle very well because a couple of years ago, with the approval of the land bank people, we were allowed to use that property to park all of our cars on there while our parking lot was being redone. So I was up there mowing it and striping it and doing it with some of my fellow property owners. And the triangle's not the problem. What I don't understand is the two parcels, those little guys down in front along Eighth Street, why do they have to be part of the deal? You know, it covers our driveway. It covers, you know, where the tart trail is, and that should be the tart trail and everything else. Anything else, it's too early to tell until there's more definition as to what the total parcel is going to be, whether, you know, we may have further comments on that. My only personal comment on, you know, workforce housing is, you know, it would be really nice if the workforce housing was somehow controlled to be for the people that work close to where that property is. I don't know how you do that, but that would be really nice. Thanks.
Thank you. And just to, any other public comment at this time, first of all? Seeing none. Just to clarify, Lauren, this wouldn't, no matter what we're voting, I wouldn't automatically give anybody the rights to take the tart trail or Riverine's driveway out.
No, this is just in relationship to the triangle and a portion of the land bank, former M dot real property.
Just to help you out there, sir. Okay.
And just a little bit further on that. And even in the future, if the driveway is not needed, that currently services the copy shop building, that's all that Commissioner Treadwell and I were referring to, is maybe just to convey that driveway to the development, not conveying where the tart trail is or Riverine's driveway that goes across the city. So the city would still retain the bulk of those two parcels.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Okay, I'll bring it to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And on to item number two here in new business, and this one's from me. And that is the reconfiguration of the DDA board. Up until the establishment of the Hickory Hills Committee, this was the largest board. Though the DDA is important to the city, it is also not a, you know, it covers a very limited portion of our city, twelve members, especially when we've had different times of adjustments of members on it over my nine years, not just since I've been elected. Okay.
Sorry.
I'm just kidding.
You can keep talking.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap it up. That, it just seemed like it was a time after the resignations of Katie Bertadato and Gabe Schneider in relatively short order. I held off on asking for an ad hoc, so I could look at the numbers a little bit, as this is technically a mayoral appointment. So after that, and then with some, the additional consideration of Scott Hardy deciding to leave, that I have decided to bring this forward. So we could, we can't just, in theory, if we just didn't appoint three people to those spots, those spots would still exist. And I'd rather see us bring the board down. The DDA does have, by statute, certain requirements such as property owner, et cetera, but this is more than enough, we've figured, to still be able to meet that need as well as have good representation on the board, with some general seats. So I'm open to any questions further about this or the motion. I'll let you all dictate. Go ahead, Jackie.
Could you just comment for us on the benefits that you expect from the smaller body?
I think it'll allow conversation to just be a little more nimble. I think we've had issues in the past sometimes with quorums. A lot of the people who are on the board are business owners. They're, you know, so we're starting to kind of juggle where we'd be one person there or not. I also think that. I also think that it's just a very large board, we, a lot of our boards are nine, seven or nine, and I'd like to see it fall more in line with what we see on our other boards like Planning Commission and Light and Power, so.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Any others? Or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
I move.
You're on it, Jac.
Amendments to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, Chapter two ninety-eight, Downtown Development Authority, which would reduce the number of seats on the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors from twelve to nine, be introduced and scheduled for possible enactment on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, any further discussion on this? Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you all for that, and now we've all saved ourselves another ad hoc, too. I'm only joking about that, but, go ahead, Jac.
I move that we have a one-minute recess.
Oh, you can request a minute, you don't even have to make a motion, we'll go ahead and do that, one-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
I was gonna be really snippy about it, but.
Call him back, exactly, fifty-nine seconds.
Exactly, maybe as far as the coat rack.
Hi Fred, how are you?
No, we have to do the implementation policy still.
Appointments.
I know. Okay, we're gonna bring this meeting back into session, and we're gonna now move on to new business item number three, which is discussion of a draft implementation policy for the proposals passed this fall. I will want everybody to note that there is no motion on this, so much like when we have a study session, there's no motion on this, this is taking feedback from the public and introducing it for the public to have looked at leading up to this, and I know that the city attorney will be taking copious notes, and different versions will be brought back in the future. So I just wanted to say that we're not gonna be waiting around for a motion, this is really just, we've got a lot of packed study sessions coming up, and we wanted to bring this forward sooner than later to start getting input. So with that, I will hand it over to our attorney, Lauren Trubalow.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Shamro. Yeah, I, just like the mayor said, I'm just looking for some feedback, we did receive some feedback, also some emails from folks, and, you know, really, the entire purpose of this policy is to flesh out the process for putting these proposals on the ballot. So the charter is not self-executing, so in other words, it doesn't just, the proposal doesn't just appear on a ballot because the charter says it has to. It has to come to this body to have that ballot resolution adopted and so forth, and there's a process for that, and so really, the point of this type of a policy, we did this with the tall building charter amendment, is to make sure that all proposals get treated the same. And so that there is a consistent process for that, so that when proposals come forward, the public understands how that's gonna be processed, the proponents of the proposal understand how that's gonna be processed, the commission understands and staff understand how that moves through the process to get from a proposal from whatever body it's coming from, be it DDA, Brownfield, whatever, onto a ballot to be voted on. So we just have to make sure that's always the same, so that one doesn't get treated different than the other. And so that is the purpose of this policy, and I did mirror it off of the implementation policy for the previous charter amendments that we had, and I did speak with staff that implement this policy a lot from the city clerk, because it deals with elections, to work through this. And so I just, I guess that's just my preamble on the subject. So we didn't get a lot of feedback, I got, I think, three or four emails, some more detailed than others. One thing that was rather consistent, that was commented on, was section four, needed to be clarified to make sure that it was clear that existing TIF plans, they continue in existence as they are now, as they were prior to the election. If they come, if an extension or an amendment to one of those existing TIF plans comes forward, this would apply to it, it would, it would go through this voting process, but the TIF plans as they exist still exist, they don't need to be voted on because they existed prior to the charter amendment and they continue. So hopefully that makes sense, and I will take some of that feedback that we got and try and clarify that in the draft, so that that's clear, because it was clear to me, but obviously wasn't clear to everybody, so I will take that and bring it back at a future meeting.
All part of a good editing process?
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Is there anything on that particular comment that, before I move on, I'm just gonna kind of like go down the list? Okay. There, there were comments about subsection three or section three that came through that indicated that perhaps it's sort of a one and done, that once a proposal is voted on, it shouldn't ever be voted on again. I respectfully disagree with that, I, you know, that, to me, that's sort of like saying, well, if you run for a board once and you don't make it, you can never run again. It's, you know, the voters may change their minds, and they're smart enough to know if they want to vote on it differently or the same, and so it seems to me that it should not be limited to a one and done.
But it would be limited to the time period of it, so if one was expiring in, like, TIF ninety-seven expires in twenty twenty-seven, after November of twenty twenty-seven, it could not come back on the ballot because of it already expiring as a renewal, correct?
So, yes, precisely, so if, if it expired, and there was nothing done to extend it, and then for some reason, there was a new proposal for a new, I guess, a new TIF ninety-seven or a new plan for that area, that would come forward to, you know, through the, through the policy, of course, and be voted on.
Go ahead, May.
So you had indicated that you had worked from the previous charter amendment, which was the tall buildings, is that correct? So I'm curious about, with respect to this provision, does the tall buildings charter amendment limit the bites at the apple for a developer if, if a developer brings forward a proposed project and the voters say, no, we don't want that project, could they continue to bring that forward?
Yes.
So that, so that.
That's consistent.
That's consistent, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna keep going down the, the list. There were some comments made about proposals that may come forward to create a TIF plan by initiative, and that is not an available process. So the opposite is available, so for example, prior to, leaving the charter amendment aside for a moment, if that didn't exist, if a TIF plan, or if a DDA TIF plan were voted on and approved by this body, that would be through an ordinance, that's how that takes effect. There could be a referendum on that ordinance, and petitions could be gathered, and somebody could referendum that, and then the folk, then the voters could vote on whether or not to keep the ordinance that created that TIF plan. Does that make sense? The initiative process does not fit within the statutory framework of creating a TIF plan, and the reason for that is that it either comes from an initiative from the board, the DDA board, or it comes from this body saying, we think there should be a TIF plan, and then there's this whole public hearing process and notice process that has to occur under the statute, and that does not fit with an initiative process. So it's not available to have just an initiative of, like, a grassroots initiative that says, we're creating a TIF plan, because that's inconsistent with the TIF Act and how that process has to work.
So if someone went around and got eight hundred signatures for a TIF, it wouldn't matter because it's illegal by process?
Right, so, yeah, if there were sufficient signatures in all other ways.
Yeah.
It would still not be consistent with the statutory process, and so that would not be able to occur. Does that make sense? Because it's a little bit confusing.
That's why I was going for the black and white version of it.
Yeah.
You could turn it in, but it doesn't matter.
There are other, there, so there are many kinds of TIFs within the TIF Act, some, a couple of them are, I believe, by resolution, but that is also, you can't do a resolution by initiative. Does that make sense? Okay. Let's see, there's a suggestion to, about the timing of the ballot proposal with respect to the public hearing, and I just talked about that public hearing process, they have to occur, and the notice period, and whether that could be, that could occur before the, the item went on a ballot for the public to vote on. That can be changed, so that, that timing in the process occurs. The, the charter amendments really speak to a city action or a city commission action, and having a public hearing is not like an approval of a TIF plan, it's a public hearing, so I don't think there's a reason why that can't occur prior to it going to a vote. Just any type of an approval of any part of that process, I don't think can occur prior to the vote and still be consistent with the charter. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. All right. Let's see. So there was some comment made about whether or not if, if the voters do not approve the TIF plan, whether or not that should come back to the City Commission for action that would be consistent with that vote. I'm sort of of two minds about this, and I'm just being forthright, I, you know, it's, it's difficult, there is, there are cases that talk about you can't bind a commission, and then on the other hand, there's, there is some discussion also about this idea that if the voters approve a TIF plan, the City Commission is not bound to follow that. And there are cases that talk about the City Commission is not allowed to delegate its authority in making decisions to a different body or to the electorate. So I think we have to be careful when we talk about what the City Commission can and can't do after a vote, and I think it's probably the most conservative, and by conservative, I mean the most, the safest, to have the commission not act any further if the vote is to not approve the TIF plan. And then if the TIF plan is approved by the voters, not bind the commission to that, because, I mean, I find it would be very unlikely that the City Commission would disagree with the voters if they approved a TIF plan. But given the case law that you cannot delegate your authority to another body, if there were to be a challenge, that could be another point of challenge in that instance. So that's my opinion on those comments.
So it would be no is no from the public, and yes would mean it would come back to the commission to be handled through the rest of the process.
Correct, yes. And I think that covered most of the comments that I received, let me look at the one other email. Yeah, I think that covered most of the comments that I received. So, yeah.
Okay, so go ahead for more additional.
Hear your feedback.
I'd, I'd love to hear your thoughts about ballot language, you know, whether it should be generic or proposal-specific, I, of course, am inclined toward proposal-specific, and just wondered where, where you're coming out.
Right, so when you're writing ballot language, it should be very vanilla, so, and I think that the city clerk can speak to that as well. There are very specific parameters when you're talking about what the question should be on a ballot, and really, what the rule of thumb is, is that it should be very neutral and not sway in one direction or another. And that's the reason why, like, with the tall building, we suggested it's just a fill-in-the-blank, and that's how we've done it, and that's how we're suggesting it for, for this ballot language as well. And the reason is because, you know, I'll just use the tall building proposals as, you know, an example. One building may come forward that everyone thinks is great, and you're looking at that through that lens, and we don't want to end up with language that says, should we build this wonderful, beautiful, awesome tall building, right? And then the next one is more controversial, and the ballot language, language ends up being, should we build this terrible, awful, no-good, very-bad built tall building? So really, what you want to stick to is just the facts, and so we did have quite a bit of discussion about this amongst staff as well, and for the tall building, we landed on, shall a building over sixty feet be built at X address, whatever that is? And so really, what we want to mirror for this is, you know, shall a TIF plan, and we can use the, the title that it's been given, right, entitled X, Y, and Z, be approved, and which TIF plan is available for, for viewing at the city clerk's office? And, you know, in the, in the resolution of approving the ballot language and, and the materials, we would link that, you know, so that it would be easily accessible to the public, and that they can read it and draw their own conclusions without any particular attention being drawn to something that we may think is important, or the commission may think is important, but really is something that is going to sway people one way or the other. but really is something that is going to sway people one way or the other. And what we want to be thinking about is, can the city justify in that ballot language that it is not persuasive? That's the standard in election law, is that it cannot be persuasive. So by highlighting something in that plan, is that going to make it persuasive when you're leaving something else out? My opinion is, it's much more conservative. And again, by conservative, I mean will hold up better to challenge. If you can refer to that plan that has been through the public hearing process and let the public look at that plan themselves and draw their own conclusions, and they're certainly able to do that. And then you haven't picked out the things from the plan to highlight in the ballot language.
May I respond? I was with you when you mentioned fill-in-the-blank. And certainly neutrality of the language has to be preserved. But if there were a fill-in-the-blank that identified, you know, the time period that the TIF applied for, the purpose of the funds, I mean, something that every TIF plan would have in common, you know, that essentially the definition of the plan that's being proposed, fact-based, presented in a neutral way. Wouldn't it be important for voters to have easy access to at least that level of fact on the ballot itself?
I mean, it could be, yes. I think that a very basic level of what you're talking about, I think the number of years if it's being extended, for example, that could be something that's on there. It was suggested to, if there's an amendment, to, like, list out some details of what's in the amendment. That makes me more nervous because then we're picking and choosing which details we're taking and which ones we're not. And a TIF plan is, it's a big document typically, right? So, yeah, I think we could look at adding a fill-in-the-blank for, like, number of years or some of those very, very basic components. I wouldn't want to advise picking out more detail from it than that, really.
Well, I think maybe for, when you bring it back, not to be included in the actual policy, but maybe an example of what you would think that would look like for us to read and dissect a little. You know, Commissioner, you know, Commissioner Anderson's raised some points and the date, you know, like the dates. You know, others might not want to see as much, might not agree that as much detail is there and have it just be connected to other sources. So maybe some, an example for when that comes back of what that could look like for something to start from. And so we can get an idea of that as we continue with the conversation. But go ahead. Did you have another point that you wanted me?
No. I think, I think that Lauren has addressed the other, the other points that I had. Is there any interest among this body to have a motion to memorialize our intent that we...
We cannot make a motion because it was not in the packet.
Okay, all right.
But we...
You can, but I'm taking notes. I think that, and I'm gonna bring it back to you to discuss further, so.
Great.
And just to note that because we don't have a motion as of right now, this isn't, you know, being brought back on, you know, March 17th for possible enactment. When it comes back, it still won't have an immediate effect, whatever she collects, if we missed some points or other. There'll be more robust discussion, let's just say. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, so in the preamble section, the word create, that is the only word in there. And it's not in brackets, but... And then below that, you have the ballot question. And then you have, in brackets, created, extended, amended, modified. Shouldn't it be in the preamble, also in brackets, with all those variations?
Good point. Do we have other questions or comments as we're taking feedback? And again, we will be bringing this back. I'm gonna be honest that I was initially told that we couldn't have a motion. I would not be comfortable making a motion on anything at this point just because we didn't publicize it. But we will have more conversations. So if you sit on it and marinate with it a couple of days and you think, oh, wait, I didn't notice this before, or, you know, we're having public comment come up and some other things, there will be more time to put more input in it. And we will not be rushing to the finish line on this at all.
No. And if I bring it back and we go through this again, you don't have to adopt it the next time either. Like, we'll get it. We'll keep going until we get it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, just one more question. The, let's see, three... I, was that addressed that you, did you cover that? If the proposal is not approved, that it just comes back? Oh, there shall be no limit on the number of times, over and over and over and over again? And how did you resolve that? Would you remind me?
Well, I mean, my opinion is that if it, if they, if it wants to come back, then it should be, the voters should be able to vote on it as many times and they can keep saying no to it. But to limit it to one time, I think is inconsistent.
Isn't that expensive?
No. If it's a regular election, it doesn't cost the city anything more to have it on the ballot.
Again, that was where I asked the clarifying question that, again, let's say we're talking about TIF 97, and it's now November of '28. You can't bring back the renewal because it's already outside of it. It's a window. So you can take the bites at the apple as long as it's relevant. Yeah, as long as the apple's there. Otherwise, it's gone. So, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, and on that same topic, my take on it is if the electorate says no and then an entity brings it back again, especially if it's in the same form, the electorate's likely to be very displeased and probably an even stronger no the second time. So the impetus is on the entity bringing it forward to show some substantial change of why it should be a yes the second time. So I don't anticipate that somebody would just keep bringing it back, wanting to beat their head against the wall.
On the other side of that coin, I would say this applies to Brownfield too now. And so let's say, you know, most of the time, housing projects and, you know, affordable housing projects, which is what we tend to use Brownfield for, things like that, aren't done by people who run campaigns. So let's say one failed because they didn't mobilize properly. I would hate to say too that we were saying, well, now you can't have that bite at the apple for Brownfield for this development again. Now, whether a developer would want to wait two years basically for that, who knows? But that's, that's another, we're talking in these examples about TIF and, you know, the same TIF plan being brought back over and over again. But there's a lot of things that TIF applies to. So just also making that point as we're having this conversation. So other questions or comments right now? Okay. Seeing none for right now, again, we'll marinate on it. This isn't the sprint, or sprint to the finish line. Public comment, Mr. Bimber? I see you're already ready to go.
Fred Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, city resident. As all the commission members know, I've presented an alternate form of implementation policy that differs in most of its provisions from what we have. Clearly, Section 4 as originally drafted was a problem. It sounds like that's going to be changed. I do think that unlimited do-overs is not by any means the best policy or anything compelled by any provision of law. I am an attorney with an active law license. I've researched this area fairly extensively. And I don't think that's a necessary conclusion. In many other similar areas of the law, if you've tried something once, there's at least a waiting period before you can bring it again. If someone brings an initiative petition to adopt a charter amendment and it fails, they can't bring it again for two years. Why do we let somebody get endless do-overs? Are the opponents of a change or the opponents of a TIF plan going to be allowed unlimited do-overs? Or even a single do-over? I think you're treading in an area where you're violating petition or charter language that was adopted last November. The city commission shall not attempt to evade the voting rights and petition rights of city residents. If they voted it down to present it again and again and again, maybe every quarter year, you're evading their voting rights. You're disrespecting the election outcome. I do think that your ballot language should be better changed to comply with Michigan law. A section of the Michigan election law mandates what's to be in ballot language. It is to inform the voters about the proposal before them. There should be some information provided. The notion that you have to be absolutely neutral and not include any information that might cause a voter to decide how they want to vote on the issue is ridiculous. I can show you provisions that I'm sure you, Ms. Trivolock, drafted that appeared on recent city ballots that are much more leaning against the fence than anything. I've suggested ways, very simply, by which appropriate ballot language could be provided, that it would at least provide city voters with basing information about what they're voting on. There are other provisions in here that are problems. I want to address though simply one of the issues you advocated, that a, something that, to which this policy...
Mr. Bimber.
May I continue for one more minute?
We'll give you one more minute.
Okay. Every, the adoption of TIF 97 was by city ordinance. There have been a lot of amendments to TIF 97 that have all occurred by city ordinance. City residents have the right through initiative petitions to adopt city ordinances. We could adopt an ordinance and propose it by an initiative petition that would make an amendment to TIF 97. We have the right to do that. This policy should address how those are going to be handled or simply state that ordinance initiative petitions and charter initiative petitions are beyond the scope of the implementation policy.
Thank you, Mr. Bimber. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Hi, Raymond Minervini with the Minervini Group, 830 Cottage View Drive. I'm a layperson. I'm not speaking to the legalities, I guess. I'm talking to the practicalities of this implementation policy. It's, it highlights a lot of the conflict that we have with these charter amendments and how they conflict with the process defined by state law. And as an example, we have 3BII requesting or requiring the complete statutory requirements be met. And a note I sent to the commission points out the catch-22 and something like this. You know, catch-22, as you probably know, is an impossible situation where you are prevented from doing one thing until you've done another thing that you cannot do until you've done the first thing. A big problem with running through the process at the state and county level from a Brownfield point of view, which is what I'm speaking to, is not having local support as you advance through the process to meet the statutory requirements that you've outlined here. So something has to give in that situation. So I'm not saying that this policy's ever gonna fix these conflicts with state law. I'm just saying that there's a long way to go probably to make this thing as best as it can be. Again, speaking here as somebody who works with the Brownfield side and trying to clean up what's, you know, gonna cause some serious repercussions to advance good Brownfield plans, including affordable housing in the city of Traverse City. Because there's not a process in place that really allows for advancing these things to get the approval needed to put it on the ballot so there could be a decision by the people. So I have other feedback that we can provide as this evolves, but I just wanted to put the highlight on, on that about the conflict with state law. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment? Go ahead, Justin.
Kind of interesting. So in my opinion, the TIF, I didn't vote for it. I think that the TIF is kind of a slap into the city commission's face. I mean, you know, we've elected you guys and that's kind of saying, well, you know what? Yeah, the city commission, they can't make any decisions. So we'll just go ahead and we'll petition against them and hopefully whatever growth that Traverse City has, we're gonna stop by doing it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
I used to be taller. Fred Nelson, 209 Sixth Street, Traverse City resident. I'm not anti-DDA. I mean, I sat where you are when we created it in, I think, '79. It's a scary thought. I just, I won't get into the legal stuff. That's what Fred's for and Lauren's for. But I don't want to see the city make it difficult for residents to express their opinions in charter amendments or TIF amendments or anything else. And would hate to see the city adopt the attitude toward the general public say that the national government has. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none. Actually, one of the comments did raise a question that I had and forgot. So to the point, though, of if a TIF plan was brought forward, approved by the voters and approved by the city commission, but the public wasn't happy with it, that still has, under the legislation around ordinances, somebody could still go collect signatures and challenge...
And do a referendum.
Yes. So if it passed voters and it passed the city commission, there could still be another referendum on it before. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Heather.
But I'm confused then because if the city, if the citizens have initiative that passes... I thought you were saying that the commission itself didn't have to vote to approve it?
No, they do.
They do.
They have to vote to it.
By statute.
But they can't vote to disprove it? Well, they're not obligated to approve it. I can't imagine that they would not approve it in that instance. But I think what the mayor's asking is, if the voters approved it and then the city commission approved it and adopted the ordinance to put the plan into place, could the citizens then gather signatures and referendum the decision to adopt the ordinance and then reverse the city commission's action of adopting the ordinance? And the answer is yes, they could.
Because that's how, statutorily by TIF, even without any of our charter amendments, if a TIF is passed, or any ordinance, it can automatically be referendum by the public. And that will always exist. Nothing we put in our charter will override that.
Nothing has changed about that.
So, okay. And that was my question. Does anybody else have any other questions after? Okay. So Lauren, you've got a lot of notes to take and digest and edit a little bit. And we'll have that brought back when you're ready with some more, another draft for us.
Thank you very much for your questions and your discussion.
All right, we're moving now to the Housing Commission. Under appointments, sorry, we're under appointments. Sorry, really quick, I thought I had missed the reports, but that's after this. So this I brought up. I'm fine with whatever we decide to do. Since 2015, on the Housing Commission... Oh, sorry, which did you want to, yeah?
Yeah, I'll just say I do currently serve on the Housing Commission. I have for longer than I've been behind this desk. I can choose to leave if that would be more impartial for the rest of you or if my coworkers feel like my expertise would be valuable, I can stay.
Do we have objections? Okay. So the, basically, the Housing Commission, since 2015, we've had a sitting commissioner on it. So it was Brian Haas, then it was Roger Putman, and then it's been Mitch Treadwell. That is not required, as a matter of fact, Todd does not allow us to do that. It is, in some of the policies of the Housing Commission, requesting that there's city commission engagement. And the reason why I'm bringing this forward is if that is something that this commission would like to see continued, then I don't see that we would interview other non-commission applicants for the seat with the idea that we wanted to continue that forward. If this board does not want to continue with that precedent that we have set for the last nine years, then we can convene an ad hoc. It's not, this isn't being brought forward with a finger on the scale. Because we have this policy for mayoral appointments, I didn't want to have an ad hoc if everybody says, no, no, I think it's good that we have a city commission voice on this board because we don't have any other voices right now. We don't have staff on that. Housing Commission's its own entity. And that was kind of why that was brought around. But if everybody says we'd like to give it a shot of open policy, then, or of open seat, then I'm fine with that too. I wanted to bring it for the board input and not wait until there was an ad hoc created and get into the discussion then. Go ahead, Tim. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I'm supportive of continuing with what's been done for these several years. I guess I would just make the request to Commissioner Treadwell that with our renewed awareness of reports at the end of the meeting, that if there's something that you feel worthy of reporting to us from the Housing Commission, you mention it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Also, sorry, Heather, I just got a message from somebody at home. They're not catching your mic, so.
Oh, it's pointing, it's pointing at me.
You're giving Mitch more mic time. We're, we need some of you, too, there. Anyway, so, okay, thank you for that input. Tim, did anybody else have any thoughts on this one way or another? Okay. Then seeing none, would we just go ahead with, well, it has to go to an ad hoc because of our policy?
Yes, your policy requires that there be an ad hoc. This is a little unusual. Like, normally, you don't have an ad hoc for city commissioners who serve on boards, but this, as you've pointed out, isn't a seat that's designated to a city commissioner. So, you do technically have to have an ad hoc.
So, we will establish an ad hoc by our usual method. What I would recommend is that it gets scheduled for, like, 6:15 on a regular commission night or 6:30, that we meet briefly, so we do things by the book. And then we continue with this, this policy then, this unofficial policy, and treat it in that manner unless anybody objects to it.
Why would you continue to keep it as an unofficial policy? Why don't you just designate it?
Because by HUD, we can't.
Oh, by HUD, you can.
Yeah. But the Housing Commission likes having a city commission voice on it. So, it's, you know, how we go. How we go with the federal government versus us all the time. So, okay, so with that, does that help clarify for you, Benjamin?
Yes. Yeah, we'll bring forward at the March 3 meeting an item for you to establish the ad hoc.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. And then our next one is the establish an ad hoc interview to determine appointment and committee policy. And thank you for bringing this forward, Jackie. Did you want to talk a little about it briefly?
Very briefly. I think, I think Benjamin's write-up really said everything that needed to be said. We have all found our schedules to be somewhat stretched by ad hoc committee responsibilities. And I noted that coming up here, Commissioner Shaw and Werner are going to be asked to take on four new ad hoc assignments tonight, and Commissioners Wilson and Treadwell will have three each. And it's, it's a lot. It's a lot. And many of us have experienced committees that have one missing commissioner, sometimes even two missing commissioners. And in spite of everybody's really extraordinary efforts, we still have this backlog of unfilled positions. Sometimes we hear from volunteers who are frustrated with the process or feel that their potential contributions are being overlooked. And then in conversation with Benjamin, when he mentioned that, an estimate that as many as 1,000 staff hours, a half of a full-time position, are dedicated to managing our current process, that kind of was the breaking point for, tipping point for me. And so, the purpose of the ad hoc would just be to review how we go about making appointments currently, seek any ways that would improve the efficiency, maybe reduce frustration a little bit and, and the demand on everyone's time. And so, the mayor and I have committed to helping with this review. I think we would very much like to have another commissioner participate. And what have I left off?
I think that's, that's good. So, does anybody, because this is a policy and not a one-off ad hoc, does anybody want to volunteer to be the third person on this ad hoc? Ooh, so much excitement.
Ooh. I, I do want something to, it's got to be better than it is now. And, and the schedule that we are, we were just issued, again, I've got four assignments, Tim's got four assignments, Treadwell's got three, Wilson's got three, Stanley's got one, Shamro and Anderson have zero. So, how did that happen?
Luck of the draw.
Luck of the draw. Unluck of the draw.
The unluck of the draw.
Yes.
Yeah, something's not quite right here.
If nobody else is volunteering, I'm willing to.
We'd like, we'd welcome your years of expertise of adhocking.
Willing to.
Okay. So, does somebody want to make that motion, then? And I'm, okay. I was going to say, I'm willing to serve as chair as mayor, but-
I move that we establish an ad hoc to address the possible revisions to our current appointment and committee policies. Members to consist of Mayor Shamro as chair and Commissioners Warner and Anderson as, as participants.
Okay. Does that work closely enough?
It does, yes.
Okay. With the legalese that we have in the packet, so perfect. Okay?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Warner. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any further comment on this from the commission?
Just that I've, you know, shared my thoughts every year about if there isn't that many applicants, as there are seats open to, like, not waste anybody's time, or, like, even the opportunity to just review letters if we already know and have a good sense of what we're going to go with. Normally, it's incumbents. I really feel bad for wasting people's time who step forward and want to volunteer, but we ask them to, like, take time off of work, et cetera, and they come down here for an interview. And it almost seems like we know they're not going to be selected.
Fair enough. So, figuring out what that kind of process might look like. Any other comments? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, we're going on to a regular old, no, we're not. Sorry, just kidding, I forgot the ethics policies on this one, too. Okay. See, you're saying that we've got this ethics policy that we talked about two weeks ago? When was it? Sorry.
Last week.
Last week. Time flies when you're having fun. To develop the ethics committee, so we would like to have the volunteers for this. I believe this was something that, Jackie, you also wanted to sign up for. I also wanted to sign up for this. Was there anybody else who would like to sign up for the ethics policies?
I can, if somebody else doesn't.
Mitch stepping up to the plate, because he's got three versus your four, Heather, so, I'm just kidding. So, we have a motion then for this, please.
It's a relatively long one, but I think necessary. I'm happy to read it if you prefer.
Yes, yes. Why don't you help us out with that tonight?
That a city commission ad hoc committee on ethics regulations be established, which will develop with wide input a proposed amendment to the city charter for consideration by the city's electorate, which will require that the city have an ethics ordinance and to propose an ethics ordinance for consideration by the city commission, with the aim of the ordinance to build and promote public trust in city decision-making, with such committee to expire August 18, 2025. And further, that the following members of the city commission be appointed to the committee. And who are those members, again?
So, it would be Jackie, Mitch, and myself.
Okay.
Mitch Anderson, Commissioner Treadwell, and Mayor Shamro. We'll keep it formal for the record.
Who is serving as chair?
I can, you can, whatever.
I, I'm happy to, if you've got a full plate.
With Commissioner Anderson to serve as chair, and further, that the committee provide progress reports at official city commission meetings periodically, is part of the reports and communications section of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Great job, Commissioner Stanley.
I'll second that motion.
Great job, Commissioner Treadwell. Any other comments from the commission on this? Seeing none, any public comment on this? All right, bringing it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now, we're on to the regular old ad hoc appointments. And my computer is loading, so if anybody's is faster. Commissioners Anderson and Shaw and I had a couple of days of interviews to fill all of these seats, but lots of really, really great candidates, lots of people really engaged in our community and really excited to participate in a way that they felt, people very much, I will say, felt this is a very meaningful board to take part on. And so, that was kind of refreshing to hear people coming at it from such a genuine space. So, did you all want to add anything else?
I'm happy to read the recommendation.
Perfect. Thank you. Look at, that's, that one's about four for you, so thanks, Jackie.
I recommend that Laura Miller be appointed to a three-year term expiring June 30, 2026. Seat previously held by Corey Winfield. Kristin Erby-Weber and Brian Raits be appointed to the three-year terms expiring June 30, 2027, previously held by Michael Earl and Susan Otgers. And Sam LaSousa and Jacob Goodman be appointed to the terms expiring June 30, 2025, with an additional full term to follow, extending the expiration date to June 30, 2028, previously held by Bernard Rubin and Kimberly Romberg on the Human Rights Commission, as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Mayor Shamro, Commissioner Shaw, and Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you for that.
Support.
Thank you, Stanley. Quick there. Any other comments on this one?
Can you just, before the minutes are official, add the missing "and" or such that's in there? You'll see it later when you read it closely.
Okay, yes. Something's wonky.
Wonky.
Okay.
Just before we call the vote, too, did this take care of everything, or do we still have this open city CEO, I'm trying to remember?
No, this, this completely populates the Human Rights-
Yay!
Perfect. Yeah, that's the first time in a long time, so.
How's that for a lead?
Yeah.
You know what I mean.
Completely populated.
Excellent. So, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? All right, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now, we have the Board of Tax Review Ad hoc. Looks like Mayor Pro Tem Wilson was chair. Any comments or just a motion? Or did Tim Warner, Tim, you look surprised. Did you think you were chair? Which you can, you can comment as well if you-
This is to form an ad hoc, isn't it?
Oh, sorry, this is, sorry. Sorry, guys. That was me. Sorry. It's not quite 10 o'clock yet, but I'm apparently getting the, uh, tonight is my, uh, sorry.
We have so many ad hocs that run together.
It's not even 10 o'clock yet, and I'm channeling the Richard Lewis of my brain starts to melt, apparently. So, I, this is an appointment process, sorry.
I'll make the motion that the City Commission Ad hoc Interview Committee be established to make a recommendation regarding two appointments to the Board of Tax Review, term expiring December 31, 2027, currently held by John Peck and Paul Fitzsimmons, and that Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Treadwell, and Commissioner Warner be appointed to such committee with Mayor Pro Tem Wilson as chair.
There you go.
Support.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for saving me on that one. All right. Any further comment on this? Seeing none, any public comment on this? Bringing it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And this is another establishing an ad hoc. Go ahead.
Well, so, as I'm looking at this, I see this is the light and power.
Yeah.
And this has come up in a couple of other instances where, you know, this is one of the bodies that the city commission has two city commissioners sitting on, much like planning. And in the case of the planning commission as well, we had one of the city commissioner representatives on the ad hoc and the other was not.
Right.
And in this case, Commissioner Warner is on this ad hoc and I am not. And so, and which, I also, speaking, you know, to the way that these are distributed, understand that I was, by the luck of the draw, far fewer, but I, you know, so this had come up in conversation previously, that if there are two city commissioners on a body, that either both or neither should be on the ad hoc selecting. And I, I have no particular feeling about this. I'm, I would be happy to serve on this. I also have extreme confidence in my colleagues in, in selecting a representative.
Okay. I think that's a good thing for this new ad hoc, on the ad hocs to consider. The policy right now provides for just one.
There you go.
So, yes.
Actually, as you, as we brought this one up, I was thinking about that for the policy discussion, so that will definitely be on the agenda.
So, with that in mind, I'll make the recommendation that the City Commission Ad hoc Interview Committee be established to make a recommendation regarding one appointment to the Traverse City Light and Power Board, term expiring April 1, 2030, currently held by John Taylor, and that Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Treadwell, and Commissioner, Commissioner Warner be appointed to such committee with Commissioner Treadwell as chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley.
Support.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any comments on this one? Seeing none, any public comment on this one? Seeing none, bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now, we're doing another establishing ad hoc, and this is the Arts Commission. And Commissioner Shaw is our only representative on that board and will be on this ad hoc. So, this one takes care of itself. So, if anybody would like to make that motion?
Yeah, I move that the City Commission Ad hoc Interview Committee be established to make a recommendation regarding one appointment to the Traverse City Arts Commission, term expiring April 4, 2038.
2028.
Yeah, as I say, that definitely is a tie-up.
I did catch that.
You were just waiting for me to say that. What is the correct date?
2028. April 4, 2028.
Currently held by Roger Amunson, and that Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Shaw be appointed to such committee with Commissioner Shaw as chair.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, ad hoc committee to interview recommendations regarding the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll make the recommendation that the City Commission Ad hoc Interview Committee be established to make a recommendation regarding two appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, terms expiring June 30, 2028, currently held by Jeff Cockfield and Merrick Roman, and that Commissioner Stanley, Commissioner Warner, and Commissioner Shaw be appointed to such committee with Commissioner Stanley as chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Go ahead, Jackie.
Is this a duplicate of item 11?
Uh, oh.
Yes, it is.
You just saved us another-
An extra ad hoc.
Two minutes off of our time. Good job. Efficiency right there. Thank you, Jackie. All right. So, motion stands. Any other comments? Great point. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving to Historic Districts Ad hoc Establishment. Kind of same thing, we've got, nobody's on this one, obviously, so it's just an open field for all of you to be sacrificed upon. Does anybody want to make the motion?
I move-
Okay.
I move that the City Commission Ad hoc Interview Committee be established to make a recommendation regarding two appointments to the Historic Districts Commission, term expiring June 30, 2028, currently held by Colleen Shannon and Jackie Shiner, Shinners, and that Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Shaw, again, and Commissioner Treadwell be appointed to such committee with Mayor Pro Tem Wilson as chair.
Support.
All right. Thank you, guys. And just to clarify, this isn't a specific, like, this can be anybody who wants to apply for Historic Districts.
Correct. The only specific seat is the architect requirement, and that was fulfilled recently, so it's wide open, really.
All right. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and so, as we discussed in the earlier agenda item, we have had on file for, or we've had for a while now, Katie Burdado's letter of resignation, Gabe Schneider resigned during a public meeting, and Scott Hardy resigned recently and earlier this month. So, this is accepting their resignations officially. All of them have been long-serving DDA members for, long-serving for our time. Katie, I believe, Burdado have been on for a few years, and Gabe and Scott have been on for a pretty long haul, so we want to thank them for their public service and their work with the DDA. And they literally are irreplaceable now that we have eliminated their seats. So, with that, would somebody like to make a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
I recommend that the resignation of Scott Hardy, Gabe Schneider, and Katie Burdado from the Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors be accepted.
Support.
Thank you. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, bringing it back, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And again, we thank them for their service. And then 11 is a duplicate, so now we are on to reports and announcements. Somebody have any reports they'd like to share from their boards? Go ahead, well, we'll start with Heather, and then we'll go to Jackie.
Oh, okay. Complete Streets, we met on the 12th, started digging into language. One of the, one of the people attending the meeting, Lance Bomer, sent in a new draft, so we're just kind of digging into language, talking about enforcement. I think maybe the most, the biggest thing that came up during the meeting was an ask that the City Commission commit 1% of its budget to supporting these strategies of Complete Streets.
Well, that'd be interesting if that comes out of the committee, so that's great.
Anything else, Tim?
No, thank you.
And then, and then we have another one, Brown Bridge Trust.
Oh, nice.
So I think the biggest, I mean, we talked, we're talking about, again, language to get on the ballot. There were 42 responses so far from the survey, but I think the biggest thing there that we're talking about is a kind of housing trust, that we may recommend removing some money from the trust to set up a separate trust, perhaps to be managed by another entity outside of the city, to help people put a roof on, add some ADA accessibility, maybe to add, to fix up a bedroom so that they can rent it, those kinds of ideas. They do, these do exist in the United States, so we're talking about that.
Great. Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah, Planning Commission for tomorrow has already been canceled. Board of Zoning Appeals got canceled last week. But Housing Commission, the biggest thing that we've done lately is we did our performance evaluation of our executive director, Carl Fulmer, which, as evidenced by him doing the presentation, has had his contract extended, so.
Great.
He's doing a good job.
Thank you for that update. Go ahead, Jackie.
Just to expand a little on the Planning Commission, there will be a pretty interesting agenda coming up at the next meeting on March the 4th. There will be both a public hearing and, I understand, a Planning Commission vote on the recommendation to expand options in the R2 zone for triplexes, quadplexes, and ADUs.
Well, ADUs are already allowed, but within the context.
So increasing density in the R2 district. We have, further discussions are going to be happening on repairing and buffer ordinance, which I believe we're hoping to have language, proposed ordinance language ready for commission review in March. And then the short-term rentals conversation is continuing, and we are anxiously awaiting on the commission any news about the revised safe harbor slump for year-round operation, which I understand will be fast-tracked to the extent possible.
And just to clarify for the public at home as you're updating, the short-term rental stuff that you're looking at is restricting what's allowed further, not expanding? Or are you talking about expanding our short-term rentals?
It wouldn't be expanding overall, but maybe recognizing some places in the town where they're less impactful, and if there is a way to shift the distribution through the city, that might be an option.
Okay, good to know.
And it would be limited to land use solutions, that police power solutions and possibilities for other ordinances would be coming through this commission after a steady session.
Fantastic. I just didn't want people at home to think they're going to expand short-term rentals all over town, so just thank you for that clarification and looking forward to hearing more about that discussion. Thank you. Moving down the row, Tim, I think you had your hand up, yeah?
Yeah, just to expand on what Commissioner Shaw said, Brown Bridge Trust Fund ad hoc, from a very high level, where we started the discussion about some of the principle, so there's roughly $12 million in the Brown Bridge Trust Fund, and that by charter, we, as a city, are required to invest in securities of the United States, so historically, like the past 20 years, it usually gets 1.5% to 2% interest, which some years struggles or does not keep up with inflation. So the discussion started with, could some portion of that 12 million be invested locally, like in our own community, and make a better return? Not a big return, but make 3% and be invested here, like put the money to work here, and so that's where the discussion came from. So if anybody watching at home has thoughts or ideas, please reach out and share them, because while we're pursuing one particular option right now, like a revolving loan fund, we're open to ideas.
And I know Community Foundation recently did that as the first local entity, so there's some precedent and some guidance there, too. So great job, that's great to hear. Any other updates? All right, moving on then, we have final, again, we will be going to close session with action after, after this, but first we have general public comments, so if you want to comment on anything that was on the agenda tonight, or anything in general, please feel free to do so now. Go ahead.
Doug Kimball, Spruce Street, Traverse City. I want to offer a suggestion regarding the ethics issue. And on January 22nd, 2024, a governance session was held, and the interim city manager explained that you commissioners are not here for the money, but you're here to serve the residents of Traverse City, that you're here to improve the lives of the people of Traverse City. After all, the residents pay for this city, all of the businesses. And I didn't hear anybody disagree with that, so I assume that you did agree. And it was said that there were to be no surprises brought to a meeting from commissioners, and only items on the agenda get voted on, and so that's that part of it. Then the Planning Commission heard opposition to the master plan at Bay Street. Early on, we stated very plainly that we want what we wanted and what we opposed. And then, with a straight face, Planning Commission Chair stated that the master plan was based on residents' input, that the citizenry wrote this plan, and that the neighborhood preservation was top of the list. And then the Planning Commission led us down that path, but then proposed four zoning classification changes for Bay Street, four, for the street. That sounds a little like a definition of unethical. Then after all of our resident input was ignored, the City Commission on September 3rd held an orchestrated surprise vote and rescinded the right to approve or disapprove the master plan. So that effectively rescinded the residents' right to approve or disapprove of the master plan, and it was gone. That vote should be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Nobody said a word about that, other than the mayor, who said it was a surprise. So my suggestion, maybe you could include in an ethics plan, language to correct the deception that was used against the residents to force a master plan on us, that you know that we opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I hope you're out before midnight.
Yeah, thank you. Much appreciated. Any other public comment on anything at this time? Please go ahead. New appointment here?
That's right. I'm Brian Rates of Webster Street here in Traverse City. I just wanted to say, I know the meetings, you know, I don't want to keep you all, but thank you so much for trusting me to be part of the Human Rights Board. I look forward to learning from all of you, as this is my entry into serving for local government in some way. So anyway, thank you all.
Welcome to public service.
Cheers.
Justin Reed, city resident. Two things. One thing, the Grandview Parkway project that's happening in April, it's kind of interesting. So between Bay Street and Grandview Parkway, that all used to be part of the right-of-way for the railroad. That used to be the Leonard Transit Company, who went ahead and had a secret railroad from Suns Bay all the way down to, all the way down to where Oriana's at. And so, you know, that was never parkland, and that was later, that was brought back from MDOT. And also, the fact that I've been hearing that, from the public, that there's been surprises, there's been deceptions, there's been this and that. Well, I gotta say, is if there is that much of a problem or issue, then why isn't there any recall petitions? Don't see any, so it must not be a problem or issue. So like during my public comments, yeah, I disagree with some things that the City Commission does, and, but I'll tell you what, though, is there some, there's some things that I like about the City Commission, and so I don't think it's my time to waste on splitting hairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other public comment? Seeing none, okay, we are not adjourning the meeting, we are going into closed session, we will be back with action. I agree, thank you for the sentiments, Dr. Kimball, of before midnight, hopefully, and we will be back with that, so stay tuned if you're already engrossed. Otherwise, have a great evening.
Boots.
I noticed that when we were in there, I was like, is this one of his socks? Breathe, I guess.
I wear my boots this time of year. I don't need to wear them around the building.
You know what, Dave's, their shirt was handling it.
I just leave mine on and my feet get nice and sweaty.
All right, we're going to be slightly more formal than we come back to closed session just to adjourn because we do have a motion to be made. So we will bring the session back into, or we'll bring the commission back into session. We, as we said, we do have a motion in consideration from our closed session. So we will have the clerk read that motion and then if one of you could make the motion.
Yes, that is that the city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Ankara in the amount not to exceed $39,000 for data review services associated with the June 2024 cyber incident with funds to come from the city manager budget and the professional services line item. We should also have it that the competitive bidding process be waived, but I want to note that this is the firm that our insurance carrier has had us working with.
Okay. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I still move.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you, Mayor Proton Wilson. Any discussion on this? There is no public for comment, so the people at home know that. Bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. We will adjourn. Thank you, everybody. If anybody's still hanging out with us at this point.